Hello? Way up in the mouth, bad access up there. So anyway, based on these factors, HFD is using this process to share with the DOT. And we're continuing to work with other government agencies and stockholders like the utility companies, Hawaiian Electric, basically the biggest one, to try and reduce these fuels for the wildland fires. And we're trying to educate the public and the large landowners about wildland fire prevention. So if you guys haven't, take a look at it on the HFD website, there is something under the wildland where you can do as private owners. It basically is keeping areas clear around your house. They say twenty, twenty-five feet. If you can do better, that's even better, because you know in a strong wind, you're gonna have fifty feet and it ain't gonna matter, it's gonna blow into your area. But try and keep trees clear, that that's another big one, that's what brings out the power line and everything like that. So, there is a website right here that I have, it's www.hawaiewildfire.org. And if you guys want to look at that, they have a lot of things about Firewise Community regarding to brush fires. Right now, I'm going to give you guys our stats for last month. We had two wildland brush fires, one cooking fire, three activated fires, I mean activated alarm, sorry, no fire. Medicals, there was eighty medicals. One MVC which is a motor vehicle collision involving a pedestrian. Three more MVCs, just car, or on car, no pedestrians. No mountain or ocean rescues, and we had one hazmat incident. The fire safety tip for the month, holiday season, want everyone to stay safe during the holiday season. Thanksgiving is a peak time for home cooking fires, yeah? So they say there's a daily average of times three during the holiday season for cooking fires than normal. Christmas, Christmas Eve, and as you all know, like New Year's, those are the other days. But some of the recommendations they have is, if you're cooking, stay in the kitchen, focus on food. I know a lot of times, hard if you get kids, grandkids, you get distracted, but trying to have always somebody watching the stove. Stay home when you're cooking your turkey, you know, just throw them in the oven, yeah, and go dig out, come back three hours later, whatever. That's another one that's gonna happen. And if you want to fry turkey, they recommend you purchase it or use an air fryer. Those are big oil ones you dunk in, they're very dangerous, because they get very hot, and when they overflow, I mean, people get burned, it starts fire, so. Just kind of think about it, think about your guys' safety during the holiday season. It's the most important thing, we want everybody to be hope safe, yeah? That's all we got, any questions for fire department?
Any questions from the board? Yes, go ahead TJ.
Yes, oh, thank you, by the way, I know you guys have been working extra hard out there. I've gotten a couple calls from residential members, asking about whether or not they need to inform you folks if they're going to do an emu in their yard or somewhere on their property.
Yes, anytime you do an emu fire, or any kind of fire, I mean, you know, outdoor fire, whether it's for ceremonial purposes or cooking, especially a emu, the number to call, I remember as five-two-three-fire. What is the number, you guys know offhand? I mean, if you go on your phone, F-I-R-E, yeah, so, yeah. Eight oh eight, five-two-three-fire, and you'd be connected to our dispatch, and just give them your address, and tell them you're having a cookie party, you make it one emu. That way, if no people see smoke, then I'll go call for no reason, yeah?
Three-four-seven.
Three-four-seven-three, that's it.
Thank you.
Five-two-three-fire, yeah. Thank you.
Wait, stand there, hold on, we may have, yep, stand by. Any other questions from the community locally here? Questions from those participating virtually for HFD? Okay, now you're found. Thank you, mahalo. Thank you, and thank you for all the good work, you folks, both, all of our first responders, you guys, thank you so much. Moving on to our police department.
Officer Brad from the Waihau Police Station. Safety tip of the month, holiday season, guys. Everybody gonna be shopping, huh? You know where the criminals hit you guys the most? From your car, you guys are gonna be shopping, all day shopping, okay, we're gonna put the presents inside the car, and then we go eat lunch. They're watching you guys, I promise you this, okay? The second place where they're watching you? Your house. Lock your guys' jealousy windows, lock your doors. I worked on the North Shore for many years, you'd be surprised how many people don't lock their doors still yet, and that's the main causes of burglaries, huh? But that's just the main thing. Thieves from cars is on the rise, yeah, especially during the holiday season. So I was gonna give you some stats right now. In the Waihau district area, had three burglaries, huh, in the last twenty days. Three, I promise you it's gonna go up, if you guys don't protect yourselves, huh? Second one, four auto thefts happened in just twenty days, just in this area now. And the UEMVs, which is unauthorized entry to motor vehicles, when they steal from your vehicle, there was eight. It's gonna keep going up, lock your guys', another tip, don't even leave your guys' spare change in your car, okay? I've seen people break windows just to grab the spare change, yeah? Um, that would be it, any questions?
Oh, that was quick, thank you. Board members, any questions for HPD, yes?
Yes. Just one quick question, have you, has HPD received any reports of people or residents getting calls saying, are you still on vacation?
I haven't heard one of those yet.
I got one like that, and I'm thinking, what the? Except for, unless somebody's checking to see if you're not at home or something.
Well, it could be that, but a lot of scammers also, yeah? If they can call you, ask you still on vacation, was it your cellphone or your home phone?
Cellphone.
Okay, so they probably don't even know where you live, to tell you the truth, they just randomly call. You know what I mean, because how are they gonna connect the cellphone to your home? You would have to work somewhere with AT&T to know where you live, so it could be somebody just scamming you, honestly.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
Regarding sobriety checkpoints?
Yes.
You guys set up last week?
Yes.
On the bridge?
Yes.
And had traffic backed up to the Lululela?
Yes, we're gonna look up to that, yes, we're changing that, yeah. Real quick, actually.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, go ahead TJ.
Thank you again, Officer Brad, for all you guys' hard work. I wanted to know, have you folks noticed or been told of an increase in game room activities in, specifically in Waihau Town? And whether, and if you have, are there online, online gaming activities? I gotta, I gotta call this by about online game rooms?
Okay.
That have online gaming?
They don't make money, huh?
Yeah, have you folks noticed the rise?
I haven't yet, and when I worked on the North Shore, we did, we hit it, we raided it a couple times. They can make thirty thousand dollars a day, huh?
Yeah.
That's how fast they bounce back, yeah.
Do you know if the location that used to be known as Kamaa, a gas station, is shut down?
It's that one right across Surf and Salsa. Yes, it's shut down, yes, but we had to hit it like three or four times.
Yep, fabulous.
Because they were making way too much money.
Oh yeah, and no taxes, right?
Yeah, exactly, no taxes.
Great, thank you so much.
So we shut down, we hit it maybe about four times, and they finally shut down.
Excellent.
But let me be honest, they're gonna pop up somewhere else, yeah?
Yep. People might want to watch out.
Yeah, but none, I haven't heard of none here, but there probably is, yeah. Any questions, folks?
Chair.
Any, any other questions from our board? Okay, questions from the community, yes?
Chair, I have a question.
You know, the other week, I was visiting Hoala School?
Okay.
In California.
Yes.
And someone said a fight was breaking out at the park.
Okay.
And I stayed at the school area, but, you know, I had to go see, oversee, and anyway, apparently some middle school kids had gone there to fight.
Yes.
Two girls. And it seemed like it took forever for the police department to get there, and of course, they live so far away, right?
Yes.
The station is so far away from the park that it takes time to get there, I guess, but I'm kind of curious, how come it took so long? And also, too, the principal of the school, you know?
Sam.
Apparently tried to stop a girl from lunging forward, and some boy hit him, yes, mark on his neck.
Hit Sam, the principal?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I just kind of wondered if there's any update, and following that, I'm kind of concerned, because I heard that there've been a lot of fights off campus from the middle school.
So that's why we've been trying to stop policemen over there.
What are you guys doing about it?
We're gonna try to keep a policeman over there, yeah, we're gonna try to keep a policeman over there when we have resources. We do have our sheriff's policeman, but sometimes there's a lot of crime going on at that time. Oh yeah, we'll try our hardest, I'll go talk to Sam, I'll go work something out with Sam. I know him really well, actually.
Okay, any other questions for HPD here locally?
Chair, I have a question.
Stand by, hold on, we're gonna come to virtual, hold on, hold on. Thank you. Any other questions for HPD here locally? Yes, come, come, can you please come up to the mic? No, to the mic, you've been trained about this.
So, I don't really think the Waihau Police Department gives a damn of all the motorbikes going up and down.
Dirt bikes or?
Dirt bikes, I don't think you guys give a rat's ass, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, your decorum.
Okay, all right, okay. Um, just because, I talked to Florence at one-thirty Rose Street, and I asked her, hey, do you call nine-one-one about these guys? And she says, I used to, but then it just got worse.
So we do patrol, to answer, we do patrol, and we do try to catch them, but the problem with chasing them is, they're usually juveniles, they crash and they die, who is it gonna look bad on? As much, oh, wait, please, I've been on the North Shore for a very long time. How I handled it was, I would wait to see where they went, I wouldn't chase them, and then I would go talk to the parents. So I'll go let the policemen know that they need to, I don't want them to chase one bit, that's the last thing I want them to do. I know you guys want us to chase us and do our job, but that's not our job anymore, is to chase, that's too dangerous. If we even try, because most of them don't wear helmets, but eventually we find out where they live, I would catch them at the seven-eleven. Not this seven-eleven, the North Shore, because I work there, you know, country, everybody has a dirt bike. I wait there, and then I talk to them, and I tell them, bring your parents here, and I talk to the parents, and that's how I would fix the problem. We'll try, I'll try to educate the policemen on this side, on trying to do that also, but by the time someone calls, they see us, it's by policy we have to see our blue light. How far can you see a blue light? Miles away, huh? That's all they're gonna do is book it, and even if we do catch up with them, again, like I said, we don't want these kids dying, huh? They slip, fall, hit their head, it's the last thing, and I know you're frustrated, I really do, I really do understand, because I dealt with that problem on the North Shore. Give us some time, we do really care, but we don't want the kids to get hurt at the same time.
Regarding the kids, I mean, I wouldn't mind if they went up and down Rose Street, but they're, but they're, I mean, but they're gunning it, they're wheeling it, they're making it as loud as possible.
Yes.
And in fact, I wish they just allow them to go into the military land, they've torn down that fence so many times already, why not just give them a place to play? I mean, they need, it's better than doing drugs, I mean, I think if they want to be on their dirt bikes, that's fine with me, I just wish they wouldn't be gunning it up and down Rose Street, you know? I mean, you know, they are kids, and they're pretty good on their bikes, and you guys are probably not gonna catch them at all, but, I don't know, I, you know, the less, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
I know you're frustrated, sir, I totally understand, but I had that problem on the North Shore also, and we try, I promise, because they irritate me too, but I cannot chase them.
And everyone, just so that everyone knows, and HPD is aware that, and I'm looking at my, in the back area, but, you know, we did start a working committee, and this is several years ago, I'm gonna say five, four, five years ago, that it was, what, five years ago, it was happening, what was happening was really bad in terms of the dirt bikers were going on the military property, completing the fence, but they're also going through the intermediate school area, and they're going in the back and front, so there was a lot going on, so that the principal at the intermediate school asked for some assistance, so we did set up a committee, and we, we met with the army, went back in the area to look, and, and there was supposed to be some movement, you know, it has been several years, so maybe we can revisit that again to see what we can do together to help the community who lives on Rose Street, at least if we do, if you're able to do the fencing and all that, and I know Joe is waiting to jump in on this, but we also had a young gentleman who came and tried to get, to collect signatures from the neighborhood, so that he would have enough signatures that would show that the neighborhood wanted some kind of effort to be taken place to correct all of this, but he couldn't garner enough signatures, so, Joe, you want to add in?
Hey. The people that go on the military side and use their dirt bikes up there, those are not the kids that race up and down Loco and Rose Street. Well, they, they do run in there to play around, but the ones that we're complaining about, that Phillip was complaining about, are the kids that double up on a bike, or do wheelies on their bike going down the slope of Rose Street, which is extremely dangerous, and talk about a kid losing a head, that's where it's gonna happen.
Yes.
So, we appreciate anything you guys can come up with.
Which, I'll talk to my command, we'll work something out.
Thank you, thank you.
Maybe we'll just sit there.
Any other questions here locally? Okay, let's go virtual. TK, go ahead.
Aloha. So today, I noticed on Avocado Street, where the two buildings that used to have a fence line, right in the beginning where the vape shop is, when I came in the afternoon, there's no fence, there's cars, everything parked there. Are we doing something to ensure that the owner of that space is taking care of it? Because, oh, it's ugly, and my kiki noticed it.
It's private property?
It's actually, there's five owners on that property.
Okay, so, I get it, it's private property, as much as I could want to tell them, especially to five owners now.
Yeah.
One is hardly enough, five?
Yep.
Yep, so it's city, yeah.
So that comes out to them, you know, the city has no say on what somebody wants to do on their private property, so if they're gonna leave cars there.
Yeah, so actually, it's a multiple, so it's cities, state, military, the feds own a portion of it, and then the private owners, so there are five entities, so it's, yeah, a portion is city, a portion is state, and so when we've had to do an enforcement at the freshwater park?
Yeah.
You would see military vehicles, you'd see city vehicles, you'd see state vehicles, you know, because they're, and it's owned by five, yeah, five parts.
My command, and I'll get back to you.
So we got, yes.
So in the morning, there was a fence, this afternoon, when I came out of Waihau, there's no fence, everything is open, so we need to ensure that we are doing our due diligence to ensure it, you, just look at it, it's nasty.
Yes.
So we are addressing that how we can.
I'll talk to my command.
And TK, further down in the agenda, we'll bring it up under Councilmember Wire's office, and we'll bring that issue up, can you stand by with us?
Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns from virtual? All right, thank you very much.
Chair, you can call on.
I'm sorry, go ahead, yes.
Excuse me, may I just add on to what our resident TK was saying? And let me first clarify that that property, although it does have four owners, the property itself, where the asphalt and the buildings are, actually is only one owner, and like all the other areas along Lake Wilson, and the area along Willakina, the state, and its various entities, as well as the city and county, and the military, all have responsibility. I do know from prior meetings, that Senator De La Cruz's office has said that they would be looking into acquiring that property to enable a substation of some sort for Dofa or Dokeer. Now, as far as the city goes with this property, there have already been notices of violations that have been sent out to the owner who's been absent for the most part, and I do know that the owner is aware of all of these things going on. And your guys are, your team is fully aware of all of this, but again, bringing everybody to the table, and maybe this is the time when we can ask Senator De La Cruz's office to be part of that conversation, because you're right, Ms. TK, it is, it is a sad sight, and when you're coming into beautiful Waihau after a long day in town, and you see all of that ukana and opala over there, not a real nice sight, not a real good feeling, so thank you for following up, and we'll do what we can to continue to have that conversation about that property, because it is, there was a, I think, T, there might have been a, um, one of those things that you stand on and you walk, what do you call them? It was added this afternoon, I think. Yeah, treadmill, there you go, I think there was a treadmill also, so if we could, if we could maybe have a conversation offline about that property, I'm happy to be part of it, thank you.
And that treadmill, that treadmill has been there for a couple weeks, it's been there for a while. Yes, go ahead, TK.
I am a part of the neighborhood board, number thirty-five, I'm in the line Malka in Launa Valley, I am on the board, so this is where I'm coming from, from my heart, just so we can clarify who I am and where I'm coming from.
Oh, thank you very much, mahalo. Okay, and we have one more, virtual. Okay, go ahead.
Aloha, I just want to ensure, is this the portion of the meeting for expressing all community concerns?
This is, we're actually under HPD right now, and then further down, we have announcements and community concern section, that's a little further down on the agenda.
Okay, call my.
Thank you, no problem. Any other questions, virtual? Okay, thank you, HPD.
Thank you, mahalo.
Okay, we're on section four for our monthly reports, we call up Nicole, I'm sorry, our Nicole Gray, if she's there, for Congressman Jill Takuta's office.
Hi, Kendra Uishi here for Nicole Gray, who's on vacation. Like, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Okay, I'm the Representative Takuta's district chief. I hope you all got the newsletter that we sent around, if not, we can make sure that it gets to you, I think Nicole sent it over last week. Just a few things to highlight, well, first of all, a couple things that aren't in the newsletter, as you are already aware, we were able to avoid a government shutdown last week, so the, there was a continuing resolution, a laddered continuing resolution, where Congress will have to revisit in January and February to take up some of the appropriations matters that still have to be resolved, but for the time being, our boss is at home, so she'll be here through the Thanksgiving weekend. Congresswoman has also started doing what she's calling the Maui Minute, so every week on the House floor, she's been covering a different aspect of the Maui recovery, so two weeks ago, she did a Maui Minute, covering the three-month anniversary since the Maui wildfires. Last week, her Maui Minute was dedicated to honoring first responders, so we'll, she'll be continuing to do Maui Minutes moving forward to the future. And we also did a district-wide virtual town hall last week, so, you know, because of everything going on in Congress, and, you know, the, the schedule has fluctuated quite a bit, we decided to try some virtual options, so we look forward to having more virtual town halls in the future, and hopefully we'll be able to do some in-person ones as well. And lastly, one, I just want to put in a plug for something that is in the newsletter on the third page, helping constituents with federal agencies, so we do provide services where we can assist constituents who might have issues, say with maybe veterans benefits or social security benefits or taxes, you can go to our website to get more information or call our office for anyone who might need assistance with those types of things. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Kendra, questions from the board, where congressmen's, go ahead.
Hi Kendra, and thank you, please thank Representative Takuta for the town hall, it was great the other night, I was very pleased to see so much participation from our neighboring islands, it was warm the heart to know that they are out there and they want to be part of the conversation. And I had sent in a question, I think it was on the doodle dock, or the registration, if you wouldn't mind, if you could have somebody take a look at my question, and if someone could get back to me, it wasn't addressed during the town hall, and if need be, I can send you over an email with the question as well, but I kind of wanted Representative Takuta to know what was going on in our community.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you please tell me your name, and I'll go look at our RSVP list?
Sure, my last name is Karisma, C like cat, K-A-R-E-S-M-A, yes, so yeah, if you need the question, I can certainly shoot an email over to you, but if she could take a look at that, that would be fabulous.
Yeah, I will take a look at our list, and since you mentioned it, thank you for raising it, we, we did just get overwhelmed with a lot of questions and weren't able to get to everything, so thank you for flagging that. And I will also put my contact information in the chat for anybody who wants to reach out, thank you.
Okay, and also Senator Hirona's office is very well aware of that subject, so that might be a good way for you folks to touch bases about the issue as well. Thank you so much, happy holidays.
Same to you, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Questions from the community here? Okay, questions for Congresswoman's office from the, virtually, any questions from our virtual audience? Hey, questions, uh, for Congresswoman's office from the virtually? Any questions from our virtual audience? Hearing none, thank you Kendra.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Yeah, you too, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to our Army representative.
All right, good evening, good evening to the board, to the community. I'm Captain Cotts, uh, Representative Third Brigade, Twenty-Fifth Infantry Division. I'm proud to be here. So, uh, starting with some of the, uh, concerns that was brought up last month. Um, I know the dirt bikers was just discussed with Atlin and, um, through the Army channels. Um, same things that were echoed earlier today, and that's a DES/HPD response required for a meaningful ticket, and it's obviously both of us working hand in hand. Um, in regards to the fence, that's something I will take back to them and discuss, well, where we are with that, cause current, I'm not, I'm not unders, um, I do not know, so I need to follow up with them and see like where we're at with the fence and what the possibility of getting that stated is. Um, in regards to, uh, second concern was over Drum Road. So the current discussion about Drum Road is it's currently suitable for military vehicles, and the discussion right now is if, if it will be suitable, uh, for civilian vehicles and what that restoration is needed, or what restoration is needed for one day to be opened up, uh, to the civilian community. And then, uh, the third concern that was brought up was this in regards to the hour, six-thirty to seven-thirty, um, the traffic that builds up when soldiers are entering the gate for, uh, PT formations. Um, um, that's been relayed, and then it really comes down to just what soldiers are needed at what gate to quickly get people processed, uh, further in line, and that's something they're looking at to try to, um, to mitigate. And then, uh, with holidays and people, different units gone, it is constantly fluctuating, so it's kind of a challenge right now on just solving that. Um, okay, so that's what I have for, uh, last month's concerns. Moving into, um, training, so last month, we conducted our JP Marcie twenty-four oh one. It was the third JP Marcie of, um, on the island. Big success, uh, on the behalf of Colonel Shaw Brigade Commander, who is, um, the main effort within the exercise. We trained over fifty-one hundred soldiers, uh, and we moved more than a thousand pieces of military aircraft utilizing vehicles, uh, to and from, or on the island of Oahu, as well as to the big island. So huge success. We trained with, uh, multiple partner nations, uh, and our allies. So, once again, JP Marcie, for those who aren't, uh, aware of what that means, it's a Joint Pacific Multinational Readiness Center, and it's a critical exercise for us to, uh, train on moving from one island to another in case, God forbid, our nation's called upon it to, uh, to defend anyone in the Pacific, uh, or outside of the Pacific. Uh, moving into our, uh, job fair, so US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on November twenty-eighth. It's gonna be at the Airport Honolulu, uh, Hotel, and it's gonna begin from eight-thirty AM to, uh, two PM. Um, it's open to the public, and any advanced applicants may go to www.himwr.com, uh, to participate. Uh, so come out and see what available employment opportunities await, and once again, we'll leave some, some of this, so you guys can come by and see how to fill out your applicant. Uh, some, some good news stories from last month, while we're, um, in JP Marcie training, the US Army Twenty-Fifth Combat Aviation Brigade, uh, they provide air support to the Honolulu Fire Department with a, um, UH sixty Blackhawk and then a larger helicopter, um, the CH forty-seven Chinook, um, using water buckets to drop onto, uh, fires to contain the Mililani Malka wildfire, um, which was, which covered the course of five days from thirty October, uh, to five November. Um, the Army Fire Team worked closely with the Honolulu Fire Department, and they ended up, uh, the Army Combat Aviation Brigade ended up dropping, uh, three hundred buckets of water onto the fire, which equates to about three hundred fifty thousand gallons of water. So really awesome, um, it's great training for them, and B, it really helps our interoperability working with, um, our local brothers here at the Honolulu Fire Department, and glad we were able to get the fire out. Took a while. And secondly, um, thank you for everyone who, for participating in the Veterans Day Parade. I know a lot of our brigade was unfortunately not able to make it because they were still in training, but I'm tracking we were able to support, and it was a very big success. So I wanna thank everyone for the community for A, supporting the veterans, the community, and then all the board members and everyone for making it happen. We're glad to be a part of it, and just more people. Only sad thing is more people wanted to be a part of it, weren't able to. So thank you for that. Um, and that's all I got for me, so mahalo for your time and be fielding any of your questions.
Questions from the board? Yes, go ahead Sylvia.
Um, I'm, oh, it's loud. I'm just curious. Um, thank you very much for helping with, um, putting out the fire and using the military helicopters. And, you know, as I watched them go back and forth in the heights, I was just wondering where did the military or, or the Honolulu Fire Department, where did they get the water from to take up to the mountains?
I'll, I'll have to confirm, but what I'm pretty sure they do is they just fly over to the ocean and scoop it up that way. I'm not tracking, um, they're scooping in anyone's pools or anything along that, along those lines. I'm, I'm tracking it is seawater, but, um, it's a good question. I'll, I'll confirm. I don't wanna tell you wrong.
It wasn't from Lake Wilson?
Uh, it, it could be, I'll.
Well, I just noticed the lake went down a lot, but it could be from lack of rain.
Potential. That's a good question, though. I wanna know.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah.
Quickly, the exercise, the military exercises are, are over with. The, were the low-flying large aircraft that were vibrating my house three or four times a night, are they finished?
Uh, yes, sir. So, um, just as I'm sure you, um, everyone here wants some peace and quiet, uh, so, so do the soldiers. So we're, we're gonna be done with training for, for a minute as we move into the holidays for Thanksgiving, uh, and Christmas, and so things have really slowed down. But, um, you know, as we move into next year, uh, operations with Second Brigade, Twenty-Fifth Infantry Division, will begin to slowly ramp up, and around this time next year, November, uh, late October, early November, once again, you'll see another, uh, pickup in heavy training. So, but, but for now, uh, for at least for the next six months or so, it'll be a little, a little quiet, so, sorry for rumbling in your house.
Any other question? Go ahead, Erin.
Um, just question, so, um, in terms of, all this goes back to that military training. All the shellings, what happens with those? Cause I have a friend who works down at the airfield in the, um, Dillon Town Airfield, and he says the next day they were, his, they couldn't fly the planes because there were so many shellings left. Is there like a big sweep of the area? Like I picture like at recess, we're like, everyone clean up, everyone, do your share. Is, does that happen? Like what happens to actual casings of the?
Yes, ma'am. Are you, are you speaking of the shellings that are actually exploding, um, within the ground? Or the, um, kind of the leftover shells that was used to fire the project?
I think it's the leftovers.
The leftovers? So I can't speak to where they are moved to, but all like military shells, because of the type of metal and things that are used, it has to be properly recycled, and it can only be done on a military installation. Um, in regards to the other training areas, like if, um, brass from the ammunition that was used, and for this, uh, for this operation, we use blanks, no live ammunition, uh, was utilized. So if there's like a blank casing from a rifle, uh, all, all battalions within our brigade, they go back and they do what we call police calls, and they go through and pick everything up. So like leftover trash from, from food, um, if there was any of that missed, community is really quick in telling us, and we quickly get out there and we repick it up if, if anything was missed. Um, we, we apologize if we do miss anything. It's not our, our intent to train hard, work hard, uh, but not to dirty the island up, uh, as you can imagine. So we're very quick at responding to that.
Okay, thank you for the complete answer.
Thank you, Erin. Uh, go ahead, TJ.
Um, and thank you, and would you also, on that note, with what you just said about the trash, could you please check with your garrison's office to see if they did? Because there were quite a few social media posts, and I saw that US Army Garrison Hawaii had been tagged on those because there was, there were tons of rubbish left in our beautiful Kuahevi, so. Um, but actually, I wanted to ask if there any way that the Army, and I don't know if it's presently happening, but when your, uh, workers, if they may be coming out of Whitmore Village in the afternoon, if they could be reminded of using that far right lane to make the right turn onto Kamehameha? Because I know that that was a conversation that was had with the Navy, um, before that lane was made. Is there any way that you folks can remind your personnel to use the right lane to turn onto Kamehameha? Because when they try to turn left onto Kamehameha to get back into Waihewa, it creates a log jam, a clog jam, and with other projects that are in the works for Whitmore Village, I think it will only get worse, but if we could, um, share that, uh, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, that's a really good point, people. Um, we have to remind everyone to make sure they're properly using traffic signals and how to merge and, uh, what lanes they should be in, because out here in Hawaii, you can't afford to be a bad driver. Um, in regards to that traffic, the community, uh, Twenty-Fifth Infantry Division, everyone is tracking. We, we did see the notifications on that, um, and I know they're responding to it. If, if soldiers have went out there right now and cleaned up what you saw on social media, I can't say it's been done already, but, but we're tracking it, so we're gonna get it cleaned up.
Thank you and happy holidays, and we're sorry you folks are away from your families during the holidays, but we're glad you're here in warm Hawaii.
Go ahead, June.
Just a comment to TJ's remarks on, on the traffic, uh, that, that's Navy traffic. Um, that's the official route that they're supposed to use going into NC TAMS or the NSA building, and they're supposed to go around Wila Kina and come back in, make the left turn, and then make the, make, uh, make the left again to go up, uh, into the NC TAMS area. That, that's not the Army, that's, that's the Navy. That was the official traffic mitigation that they gave when, um, they were, uh, proposing to build on that site. Um, whether that really works, probably not, especially now with so much traffic. But at the time, it was, it was, that was the traffic mitigation, cause they did not get approval to do the other road that was supposed to come out by, um, Mauna Nui. Yeah. Yeah, it was supposed to go that route. What, that was a Navy proposal, and then the state didn't approve that at that time, so.
Thank you, Junior, and that's, yes, that is correct. Hey, any other questions from the board? Okay, questions from the community here? Uh, first, you.
Are we going board members virtually first, or are we going community?
Wait, I'm sorry, um, Dean, sorry about that, didn't see you. We'll come back to you, we just have a, um, yeah, I didn't. We'll come back to you, Dean, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Since you've brought up, um, concerns, I have a concern about the training out at, up at KTA, the Kuku Training Area One, which is a well-used training area, and during the night maneuvers, there always seems to be a problem because the trucks, jeeps, all the vehicles start stacking up on both sides of Kamehameha Highway. For some reason, they can't get in the gate, they can't get past the gate. So it's been happening for the last few years. We're accustomed to all of that, right? But the stacking of all of these Army vehicles along Kam Highway does hinder the traffic, and it gets a little dangerous because all of the, the soldiers are milling all over Kam Highway, right? But this particular occasion on November eighth, I take the trash out, cause the next day, Thursday, is trash pickup day. And I noticed a truck, which was very different from all the others. It was white, for one thing, but across the back of the gate, the tailgate of the truck, it said explosives. So when you're gonna have these maneuvers, these men should be able to go right up and not be hanging out in the community area. That's ten feet from where I sit to smoke at night. It's just right on the other side of my wall. So that was really, um, concerning for me. It was a little unnerving. That's the first time that I've seen an explosive truck right on Kam Highway. So I'd like you to take it back to the garrison to really tighten up your communication. There's gotta be somebody that can access that area quickly, and they should be in the front. I shouldn't be having to hear all this walkie-talkie people going back and forth, waiting for someone. It gets a little dangerous, and to have that truck right in front of my house, that shouldn't happen. You guys got a deal to do, you guys should be able to just do it, right? Okay, so my second point is about the noise from the helicopters, and I brought this up many times. They always say that, oh, we're done by nine-thirty. No, you start at nine-thirty at night. And the houses are rocking, right, and we have a lot of people that live along the mountain side, their homes are on stilts. So that gets a little dangerous. They've already caused a couple boulders to come rolling down. So the last time when I brought it up at the neighborhood board meeting, the North Shore Neighborhood Board meeting, they started to point fingers at all the different military, uh, branches. They said that they're not the only ones that utilize KTA One. They said the Marines use it, the, the Air Force. So again, it's communication. You got all these intelligent, handsome young men, they need to get their act together, because, you know, it is, i- i- it is affecting the community. And if you guys are going to not own up to it or be accountable, shouldn't be pointing fingers at each other. You guys need to solve this because it's been going on for years now. And Drum Road, okay, I'm sorry, but I'm from the area. So Drum Road, the initial reason for the building of that Drum Road was to have the military be able to have that access quickly, right, instead of going on Kam Highway. But because you guys use Kam Highway and cause all that destruction on our roads, along with all the other vehicles, it's been left in disrepair. So if you guys have a fire, okay, wildfire out at KTA One, where there's a community right below, how are you guys going to be able to get to that fire quickly? And my next question is.
Wait, no, hold on, hold on. Wait, seriously, you got, you got two, at least I'm adjusted to, and then we can come back to you, cause.
Yeah, I'm just wanna prepare you for the neighborhood board, the North Shore Neighborhood Board, cause that's next week. So I will be posing the same questions, letting you know the same scenarios. So hopefully, when you go back to whoever's in, in command, you'll have some satisfying responses. Thank you.
And then your, your name, can you say your name in the mic?
Oh, my name is Lenell Damake. Kids call me Auntie Lenell all over.
Thank you, thank you, Lenell. Thank you, everybody. Um, and you got that? I'm gonna go, if everybody don't mind, I'm gonna go to our board member who's virtual. Dean, you had a question?
Uh, good evening, sir. I was wondering, I saw that, uh, Kole Kole Pass is being considered, uh, for an emergency exit out of, uh, Waianae in the event of a catastrophe. I was wondering if you could give us a status report at the next meeting, uh, what is happening with that? Is it being worked on, tabled, or what? I know you folks met with the state.
Sir, could you repeat the, uh, the road one more time, just wanna make sure I'm.
Yeah, Kole Kole Pass. That's someone that comes up, uh, out of Waianae, and it comes into Schofield from the Naval, uh, uh, Ammunition Depot on the other side of the mountain. So it's K O L E, K O L E Pass.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Um, wait, before I go back to virtual, anyone here locally had any other questions? Yes, you had it, yeah. Uh, you need to come to the mic. Thank you. And can I just remind everyone that we have a two-minute limit? This is our last meeting of the year.
I'll be real quick, but, um, you know, regarding trying to repair that fence, I don't know. You know, I've been walking my dog down there for like fifteen years, and they have ripped down that fence, and then they built it up. With bars, they ripped out those bars. They even pulled out a cement bunker. They must have brought a truck down there to pull it out so people could access. So, you know, it's nice that you would mind, I'm just giving you perspective on that poor fence. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, moving back to virtual, any other questions, um, for the Army? Hearing none, or seeing none, or is that one?
Chair, chair.
Yes, yes, Dean.
Quick follow-up, please. Quick follow-up. Point of information for the, for, uh, the Army and for Sylvia. The water that was used to douse the, uh, wetland fire. The water that was used to douse the wetland fire was provided by the support from HFD. They have portable pools that they fill up for air buckets and that's what they were using. So it wasn't from the ocean, it wasn't from the river or Lake Wilson or anything like that. They have set up these buckets or these portable pools out at the Mililani Maoka Community Park and that's where the helicopters were getting their water from. Thank you.
From the fire hydrants. So the fire hydrants Dean.
Oh no, they have huge portable pools that HFD sets up.
Yeah, but you have to refill.
And the pump, the pumper refills the pool once the water goes down after they've been taken up by the bucket from the helicopter.
Okay, thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
So for Mililani Maoka, the firefighters were using city hydrants to fill their pools. However, I would like to give my two minutes to the auntie who was sharing earlier so she can finish what she was started.
Oh, okay. Did you want to come back and finish?
I want to give her my time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're on number three.
You're going to, you're going to North Shore in one week.
That does need to be repaired because in light of all the wildfires across our state, again, again, KTA One sits above the community. And there was an issue when they had that wildfire in the back of my house where the question of jurisdiction came into play. So my question is, what is the Army, the federal people doing to create a fire break? Because that fire traveled quickly from the top of the hill down to the community and we had fire trucks from five different areas. I did not see one military federal fire truck. So again, if communication could get really tightened up out there, I mean, with your folks, you know, then my community, my people can rest a little bit easier because not having access, it's really, it's really critical. I mean, I would hate for that explosive truck to be parked anywhere, people's homes. So I'm preparing you for next week, Tuesday. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, moving on to government agencies, Board of Water Supply.
Just in response to that, ma'am, you hit the nail on the head with communication. Thank you for bringing it to my attention and I'm going to communicate it to the team so we can address it. And then last thing from our Brigade Commander, Division. CG is just, everyone, thank you for so much and then everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving and then a happy holidays.
Thank you, you too, yes. Okay, and from here on, we're going to go to item 4B for our Government Agencies, Board of Water Supply, Nicole.
Aloha Chair, Board, Residents, guests. Nicole Rodwell from the Board of Water Supply. There were two water main breaks in the Wahihua area in October. On October 16th, a 12-inch ductile iron water main installed in 1989 broke at 597 Kulia Street. And on October 19th, a 4-inch cast iron water main installed in 1947 broke at 392 North Circle Maoka Place. My announcements are really fast tonight, so don't worry. Just want to announce our 2024 Poster and Poetry Contest. We have launched our annual contest, so this year's theme is "Our Water, Our Home." The poster contest is open to students in grades K through six and the poetry contest is open to students in grades seven through 12. The deadline to enter is February 28th, 2024 and for more information, you can go to boardofwatersupply.com/wcwcontest. And then just a quick note, it's not in your papers. We had our Imagine a Day Without Water event last month, so mahalo to everybody who came out. I saw some board members and some residents. Representative Caruso was out. It was a great event, the area was beautiful, I hope everyone had a lot of fun. If you have any suggestions for next year, if you want to come next year, let us know. We're always happy to hear about those. And for now, if there are any questions or concerns related to Board of Water, I'm happy to take those back.
Questions from the board for BWS, go ahead June.
Not really a question, but congratulations to Kathleen Pauna Nui for being selected Manager of the Year for the City and County.
I will, I will take that applause to her. Thank you, she's very well deserved for her.
Any other, TJ?
Hey Nicole, thanks, thanks for a great, a great event. Sorry, I thought I turned off my work phone, but it was fabulous, very informative. Love that we were able to actually talk story with a lot of those who have Kulianna around our water and also my heart beat a little bit faster because I saw Mr. Lau there. But, but thank you and I look forward to maybe being part of your planning for the next event. But I wanted to ask, the water main break at 392 North Circle Maoka Place, was that the one in Whitmore?
I believe so. But I can.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if that was the one, because I know that there were residents that had been calling in about that for like over a year. And was that a residential property? And if so, was, are there going to be adjustments made to that particular customer's water bill?
They were calling about a specific break for a water here?
Yeah, at 392, the one that you have here, 392 North Circle Maoka Place. Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, that's the one in Whitmore.
So typically, if it's a, if it's a break, that is.
Or maybe like it was a leak.
If I can get the customer's information.
Okay.
We can look into their billing and get anything corrected that needs to be.
Okay, I'll follow up with you later then. Okay, right on, mahalo.
Any other questions from the board, go Erin.
Hi Nicole, probably the only one not in the know, but on, I think it's Len Avenue, is that Board of Water construction that's happening up there on that corner?
That is part of the, our pipeline replacement, the improvement plan.
Okay, so it was a planned construction. Is that road, because that road was finally super nice, is that road going to get repaved nicely? It feels like it's, like we did the roads, took so long to get the road and then we tore it up and then now we got to put a nice road back in again. Like the planning process is a little not so strategic.
Sometimes, we try to coordinate with all of the city departments or anybody else who has upcoming projects and sometimes stuff doesn't line up, so they have to go back in. But it will get repaved.
Thank you. So Erin, that's, we can share one with you that happened exactly like that. There was roadwork done on Kilani Avenue. Nicole knows how many times I called, but there, it was beautiful. I mean, from Kamia Mea all the way up to the elementary, it was beautiful. And within a month, everything got dug up because they had to put in new lines. Within a month, Nicole, I kept saying, within a month.
It's very aggravating for us too.
Yeah, but that's why you see Kilani has all the cut marks and yeah, it's. But we learn as we go along, we get better, right? We're trying to get better each day, more better communication. Okay, I think we have board member Dean had a question.
I wanted to ask if it was possible, I don't know if you guys can do this, but because we have not been able to have a Navy representative to give us updates on the defueling and the water situation there underneath those tanks, at the next meeting, if you can bring whatever information you have available through the meetings that your Board of Water Supply is involved in, I'd appreciate an update so that our community can know what's going on with the defueling area, if possible. Not that, I don't want you to speak for the Navy, but what you've been informed, Board, BWS has been informed by the Navy about.
I'm pretty sure we can arrange that from the BWS perspective, not speaking on behalf of them.
Yeah, yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you Nicole. Any, yes, go ahead.
I just had a follow-up question, the 392 North Circle Maoka Place. Would you also get some more specific information about that leak? If you don't mind, I'll get you what information I can, because, yeah, if you don't mind, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, any questions from the community, yes, please.
Yeah, my name is Kenneth Tamora. I live right up here. My neighbor lives on Thomas and Glen and they have a water leak. It's a city, it's a water supply water leak. And it's going up into his driveway and there's numerous water supply, people come down, they dig up the road a little bit, they dig up his yard and stuff and they don't know where the leak. So I get a complaint. My neighbor talked to me and tell me what they're doing. I say, I don't know what they're doing. Yo, how come they don't call you? He said, I don't know. But the question I get is, when they're going to fix it? You know, how many guys? I think three guys came, three separate people came there and it's still yet, the water is there. So you know, if water is important, then you should fix that leak.
Can you give me his address? Can you give me his address?
Tamora, his address Tamora?
I don't have the address, it's on the corner, it's right on the corner of Thomas and Glen.
Okay.
Up here.
Nicole, call him, I can get you that information. Okay, thank you.
We'll have our troubleshooters contact the account holder and figure out what's going on.
But later on, do you want to get his, the neighbor's name and stuff, yeah? So Miss Tamora, wait, Nicole's going to come and get their neighbor's name, information, name, yeah, okay, thank you. Any other questions here locally? Okay, virtually, any questions for BWS? Okay, thank you Nicole and happy Thanksgiving. We, no report from DOT, so we're under Residents Concerns and Community Announcements. I do want to remind everyone, it's 8 o'clock and this is our last meeting of this calendar year for us. So we really do have to move through this as much as we can to get to our Board Business Section. So I'm going to ask everyone to please follow the limits of time that we have stated for community announcements and it is two minutes, so please help us get through this so we can get everyone out to get their announcements said and then we can, you know, move along. So right now, we are in Section 5, Residents Concerns and Community Announcements. Anybody with announcements? Yeah, please introduce yourself and make your announcement, thank you.
Hi, yes, I'm Susan Gorman Chang. I'm one of the 10 elected Community Representative Initiative Committee members for Red Hill. And yeah, I can give a little update. So the Navy has stated they did the gravity defueling. But that's not all the defueling, even though they're moving into what they call the closure phase, there's still 32,000 gallons of residual fuel and sludge in those tanks. And just as a reminder, November 2021, 19,000 gallons escaped and that impacted, you know, 93,000 residents, sickened people, they had to be evacuated, you know, during the holiday season. So there's still a lot of, a lot of jet fuel in there. And I am excited to see that you have the shutdown Red Hill Coalition reso that you're going to be voting on tonight, so I'm looking forward to that. We have 31 out of 33 Neighborhood Boards signing on to that and it's not just shut it down, it's also remediation and a lot of other things. It's going to be a several-year process, so I'm looking forward to you voting on that tonight, thank you.
Well, it's been on our agenda every month, it's been there every month and we can't get to it, so we're trying to get to it, so we appreciate everyone's help. Thank you very much, next announcement.
Actually, actually, it's not an announcement and I think you know me by now. It's, I'm tagging on to what Ms. Chang here is talking about. So when you look at that resolution, we have been moving forward, right, on the defueling. But if you look at that resolution in its entirety, the remediation isn't only about the fuel, but it's about all the people that were impacted by it. Those that got sick, children who got sick, as well as they're still sick. They are still feeling the effects of being poisoned. So really look into your heart. I, like you, I appreciate all that the military has done for Hawaii, but you also have to weigh that with the cost. And unfortunately, two years ago to this date, that fuel spilled, right? So those kids are still sick. They need to be held accountable. You cannot just because, oh, we moved forward, okay, we're defueling, everything is pow. It's not pow yet and it's not going to be pow for a long time. So when you think about voting on this resolution, yea or nay, think about the cost in people, not about the cost in money, not about the cost and not, not about how you feel about the military. Think about the people it impacted. That's what you need to consider. Thank you.
Wanted information, Madam Chair.
Standby, we have one person standing up here, stand by. You can do your announcement.
Good evening Chair and members of the board. My name is Rebecca Garrison and I'm a community organizer with Hapa in the Sierra Club of Apai. I am a white settler born and raised in Humboldt County. Those are the indigenous homelands of the Hoopa, Karuk, Wia, and Mentole peoples and I now come on our home. I'd first like to start by thanking all of you for the opportunity to speak tonight, particularly as somebody who doesn't live here. So I just want to give a quick, you know, a, what's that? Yeah, two minutes, two minutes, yeah, okay, 10 more seconds added there. I just wanted to give a quick history of the resolution. So this is, the title of the resolution is a resolution calling for the immediate defueling and permanent decommissioning of the entire Red Hill Bulk Fuel Storage Facility. And this resolution has gone through many iterations. The first draft was penned by then Director of the Sierra Club of Apai, Marty Townsend, back in 2017. And really, the vision of Marty was that for it to become the first ever island-wide supported resolution in the history of the Neighborhood Boards here on Oahu. And since 2017, then that first year, there were 11 Neighborhood Boards that passed that resolution. And again, there's been many different iterations. But I'm proud to say that since then, there have been 31 of 33 Neighborhood Boards that have passed this resolution. And really, it's the water then that's reminding us that it doesn't matter your zip code, it doesn't matter your political affiliation, the color of your skin, or if you're connected to the military or not. We are all deserving of un-polluted, clean drinking water, right? And so I just want to take time also to give a shout out to the Wahine. This really has been led by women. After Marty, we can get, I'm thinking of Haleani Sonora Pale, Melody Aducha, Auntie Lanell, Susan, and also Diane Choi have been really, really moving this resolution forward, really trying to, you know, finish out this vision of Marty's back in 2017. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to all of you. And if there's any like funky whereas clauses or there's some narrative revisions that you'd like, we're more than welcome, we would love to work on that with you, which we've done with other Neighborhood Boards. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you and thank you for the offer of assistance if we needed anything, thank you very much. Any other announcements?
Hey Tricia, I was going to be super fast, you asked me to come tonight.
Yes, go ahead.
So just hi everybody, super quick announcement about the Wahihua Center for Workforce Excellence. It's been on hold, we were waiting for the governor to release the funds. Those funds have been released. Right now, there are RFQs out, so that's a request for qualifications. So that's just looking for people who would potentially bid on it. They're anticipating the actual request for proposal. It's a design-build contract, which means we don't have a design to show you yet because that would be part of the future contract. So we've been sort of sending. So we've been sort of sending notices, it's been on hold. We just got word the money's released, so it's why I just came to kind of let you folks know. I know you folks are busy. So either I can put my email if you folks have questions, or I can come back in the new year. But we really wouldn't have much to share until we have a design-build contractor onboard. And that would be quite a few months. That's probably next summer. So just wanted to keep you folks updated. And then let me know if there's any questions or anything else.
Yeah, thank you very much. The main thing, we were, everybody was kind of wondering what the status was, it's kind of lingering, so thank you for the update that the funding has been released. And yeah, definitely sometime next year, we'll, um, get you out here for an update presentation.
Happy to, and we'll be in touch, Jeanne. I'll let you guys get to your.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and I'm sorry, we had our board member Dean, you had a, a question or announcement? Nope, he didn't. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he did. Okay. Sorry, then, uh, we also had another announcement. It's Selena.
Madam Chair, point of information. Madam Chair, for your information, when one raises a point of information, all activity has to stop. Because the information I'm going to bring forward may tend to a violation of the sunshine law or any other NCO policy. The point of information I was trying to get across was the second speaker, um, two speakers ago. What, who, what was her name? I did not catch her identifying herself.
Linnell, yeah, Linnell, was it Linnell?
I don't know. She didn't identify herself when she came up. And the NA should also be bringing this information to your attention.
Actually, she did introduce herself earlier. Linnell.
Earlier, or, well, I, I joined the meeting late, so I didn't hear her when, when she introduced herself. I apologize.
She did, and not early, I mean, just like five minutes ago, when she was, uh, giving her two minutes.
Dean, my name is Lanell. You know, I'd like to see your face too. Instead of, that doesn't matter, isn't that kind of like protocol?
No, it's not, Madam. It's not required to show my picture.
My name is Lanell.
You're required to identify yourself, and that's what I'm asking.
Oh, I, but.
She did. She did, Dean. She did. Okay, thank you. No, no, you're fine. Thank you.
Here.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Why shouldn't all the members of the board show their faces? That's ridiculous. They should all either be in active meeting, but why can't they show their faces? If we are at home, we should show our faces. Why not?
But I just asked our NA, and he said that it's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement, but at the end of the day, why shouldn't we? Why shouldn't we be logged on and showing our faces? I'm showing my face as a part of the public. When I go to my board meeting at NB thirty-six, I, excuse me, NB thirty-five, I am on, online, so everyone can see my face. Why aren't we showing our faces? There's nothing to be hiding from. We should be open to the public. We are community members, and we live in this community. We should not be ashamed of who we are.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we can talk about this offline. I'm, I'm gonna ask the neighborhood commission office about that, so we can get clarification if it's, I'm being told it's not a requirement, but.
There's no requirement, but at the end of the day, we should know who our people are. We should know who is standing for us. At the end of the day, if we didn't have this online forum, we would be all at District Park showing our people's faces, right? At the end of the day, that's where we would be. So at the end of the day, why are we afraid to show our faces? We all know who Uncle Dean is. There's, there's no.
Yeah, so.
So that's why we are, why are we not.
So we can.
To a different protocol.
Like I said, we can have this conversation later. As I've stated earlier, we really are on a tight schedule. We are trying to get through our, uh, our agenda, so we can get to our board business. So I think this is a larger conversation that we can't really have right now, because we're in community announcements, so we can bring.
Madam Chair.
Okay, so we can bring that back.
He can simply turn on.
Madam Chair, if I may make a quick statement.
On his camera. He can.
Yes, I'm trying, okay, I'm trying to answer your question. I'm gonna.
Okay, so are we, I'm gonna continue. Okay. Dean, you had something to say, and then we're gonna move on.
Yes, ma'am. I was just saying that due to the fact that I am in a restricted area, I cannot turn on my camera. Okay, so that's why you, you don't see my face tonight. Any other time, I'm there in person, or I do have my camera on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to both of you. We're gonna continue this, um, later. We're gonna move on to, uh, the rest of our agenda, so we can get through this. There was another, is another community announcement from, uh, Selena or Michelle? Selena or Michelle? Okay, then I think that's it. That was the only other one that I had for, um, community announcements, so.
Gary Sikawa, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to, I didn't see, um, I didn't see anything written about it, but I do know that on Tuesday. Oh, excuse me, on Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, in Whitmore Village, there will be a Talk Story, uh, town hall. And I'm sorry, let me just make sure I have the correct date. Uh, it will be on Tuesday, November twenty-ninth, from five to seven PM at the Whitmore Gym. You're all invited. Come Talk Story with, uh, uh, with everyone that will be there about concerns in Whitmore. Uh, we are gonna have some advertisers and some people. So, um, feel free to join us, um, and you can reach out to me or to, um, to get more information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, TJ, for that, and I think that closes it for, oh, one more announcement. Concern. Kate, come?
Yeah, the reason why I came here was, for the last thirty years, I've been coming to this neighborhood board meeting, maybe because we have new people here, things going change. Wahehua Elementary School has one crosswalk. And that crosswalk, when it rains, it gets inundated with water on the housing side. I mean, three inches of water, you kids walk across that. And I told them, fix it, and nobody seems to understand or want to fix it. And that's, that, she knows, I've been here thirty years, and not just being done, maybe with new members, somebody's gonna do something. You know, it, it's a simple thing to see it. You don't have to wait until it rains. There's a fire engine up the road, turn the fire engine on, let the water run, and look. You know what I mean? It's the only crosswalk fronting the elementary school. You know what I mean? You know how many times I've been here? Same thing, nobody listened. You know what I mean? She been here thirty, over thirty years. You know what I mean? No, 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 I mean, so maybe new members, somebody's gonna do something about it. Okay, the second one is the road, Kilani Avenue. I don't know why they don't, going down, they don't make a left turn lane and coming up a right turn lane. If you guys live in Wahehua, you would know that's a problem. And at one time, somebody put a line on Kane Street and Kilani Avenue. Somebody just had a line there. I guess a city guy just decided, well, they put a line, and it made it real simple. People would turn into the police station, would go on that lane, people would go on, um, uh, what you call it? Anyway, the people were going up, or, you know, Kane Street was easy. And I don't know why they don't do that all the way down Kilani. You don't have to make it two lanes all the way down, just at every intersection. And the last one is Cam Highway. Make that thing go way up and make that two lanes. You know, if you guys been around and see it, you guys know. And what I was told by her is that it's, it's, it's not feasible. You don't live in Wahehua. Don't see the road. Kilani Avenue, it's an avenue, it's not a road. Well, Cam Highway, but you fronting Cam Highway. You're not going on Cam Highway.
But actually, I, just as a reminder, several years ago, seven, eight, nine years ago, we actually made huge improvements in the traffic. We had numerous, I want to say eight or nine town hall meetings here, and each meeting had about a hundred people, and we, we had, we had all the, what do you want to do for traffic? And so we improved, so that's the one that we removed site, uh, we removed crosswalks. You know, had two crosswalks in Comme Humaine Highway? You know, one on, by the McDonald's. So we removed that, because why do you have two? We widened the exit for, um, exit eight coming down. We did that. We removed, yeah, calming measures, we removed the parking slots. There are parking spaces on Kilani, and they only kept the one, because they said that was for traffic calming, but everything else moved. We removed the parking stalls that were on California Avenue, but again, they left one stall in front of the shopping center, because they said again, for traffic calming. We, um, we installed additional crosswalks, we put, we changed the timing on the lighting. We did eleven improvements to this Wahehua town, and that was over how many meetings? But we, and going to city council, going to the state side, because it was a truly combined effort with state, because we had state freeways and highways, and we had city roadways. So it took a lot, and in that mix was also the, the ponding at Wahehua Elementary, because we said when, we're trying to tie it in, that when they're going up, the water and all that. But, but they, they said, no, we're just gonna focus on the downtown area. So we're gonna, we can try again to get that going, but we did make those improvements, there's numerous improvements, um, along with the city and state officials. So that was, that was pretty tremendous. So we can try again. So we can try again for the house. No, that's, I said, we can try to put this, that one again. It was in there. It was in there. I didn't say that. No, but that's not, we're saying that it was in, it was, it was in with the whole package, yes. And I said, we can try it again. We can go back and put it back in. Yep, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to butt in here.
Yeah.
Uh, we have the border water supply here. They have, they're set up across from the elementary school right now, creating all the mud on the, on the highway. Could we get the border water supplies help to de-water or route, route a path for the water to escape from that crosswalk up there? I think you know what you want to talk about. They're up there working right now. That's why I'm asking if they can help.
Okay, well, thank, okay, thank you. Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Mr. Tamora. Okay, moving on to item six, our presentation section. We have two presentations. The first, um, I'm gonna read our rules of decorum. All participants at this meeting shall extend the spirit of aloha to one another. There shall not be any displays of disrespect to one another. Public comments can be made within the stated time limits and without interruption unless the comments are offensive and or out of order and are not conducive to civil discourse. So our first presentation here is our update on Wahehua General Hospital, and we have Brian Cunningham, the CEO of Wahehua General Hospital. Hi, Brian.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Good to see you again, board members. Good to be in front of you again for this presentation. Uh, I want you to know, I'm, I'm presenting here on behalf of the Board of Directors of Wahehua General Hospital and all of the staff. Uh, we're thrilled to be here tonight in front of you. As you all very well know, Wahehua General Hospital has been struggling, struggling for well over a decade. There's a lot of reasons for that, shifting referral patterns, and many of our incredible physicians retiring out over the years. And there, it's been well known by you all and our board members that Wahehua General is not on a sustainable path forward, uh, forward. Our board's vision for many years has been to connect with a larger hospital system. With hopes that someone with a, an equally inspiring vision and mission, uh, would be open to a partnership that would be supportive of Wahehua General and help sustain Wahehua General long into the future. And I want you to know, you know, it was because of your support, your help, our local legislators, Senator De La Cruz, Representative Peruso, all of our community that supported us, our boards, all of the hard work of the staff over the years and the physicians, that we've been able to continue this far on our mission, serving the healthcare needs of Wahehua Town and the surrounding communities. And to that, to that sort of vision of our board, we have been able to begin dialogues with, with really the premier health system in the state and whose mission is, uh, about as inspiring as it can get. And what I'd like to do is, you know, talk a little bit and introduce some of our guests from Queens tonight. But as you well know, on November third, we were able to do a joint, uh, media announcement that, uh, the Queens Health System has officially entered into an asset purchase agreement with Wahehua General Hospital. And that this agreement will allow Queens to formalize of the purchase of Wahehua General, uh, scheduled for March thirty-one of two thousand twenty-four. And with that, I want to sort of move quickly. I want to, I'd like to introduce to you Jason Chang. He's the president of the Queens Innovation Institute and the executive vice president of innovation and strategy. We also have with us Darlena Chadwick, who is the executive vice president and chief operating officer of Queens Health System. Uh, with that said, uh, it's just with such appreciation in my heart for all of you and our friends at Queens, that I'd really like to turn the balance of the presentation over to Jason and Darlena, and then take some questions for you. Jason, please, over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. I, I appreciate it, and I appreciate you being here. I, I think what I'd like to do, you know, foremost, is just express, um, you know, the, the appreciation of Brian and his team and everybody that's been part of this journey with us over the past two years. So two years ago, um, we were approached by Brian and the Wahehua Hospital Association Board to discuss the potential for an acquisition. Lot of due diligence, a lot of evaluation about the resources and commitment that it would take. And I think that we are at the point now that we've entered into an, an, an agreement. Um, and Brian said it'll be probably a hundred and twenty days before, you know, the keys are actually handed over. I think we're excited as a health system that this gives us a presence in central Oahu, um, the corridor to the North Shore and everything else that, that it represents, the good people that, that you represent tonight. And our commitment is that we will continue to provide the healthcare services that the community needs. And so it's not going to be a flip of the switch. I want to make sure everybody on, online today is able to understand and convey, um, sort of our plan and our timeline. But, um, emergency services are the preeminent, um, I think, need for the community. And there are some buildings on that campus that are extremely old. We looked at the amount of money it would take to renovate and restore those buildings, and it wasn't cost effective to do so. If you put seventy million dollars into some of the old buildings, you still have the same issues that, that you're living with today. And so we believe that, um, tearing down some of the buildings, I think some of the first things that you'll see is that we'll start construction. Building additional resources, new imaging equipment, new pharmacy, new laboratory, um, and then some additional dollars into the infrastructure around the emergency services immediately. You'll start to see buildings like the skilled nursing facility, which has been, um, vacated, being torn down, and I don't want anyone to perceive that that's a negative. But ultimately, we want to create the right footprint on that campus, um, something that allows us to evaluate what services we provide. And Queens is very proud that we are, you know, the market share leaders in almost every, um, sub-specialty across the state. And, um, collectively, with your input as well, decide what are the services that we need? Is it surgery? Is it neurology? Is it geriatrics? Is it behavioral health services? And be able to create a plan, a timeline plan, that allows us to build and invest on that campus. We think that that campus is a gem. Um, we believe that there are some really amazing things that we can do to help revitalize the community. And we know that there's additional dollars that Senator De La Cruz has, um, allocated to the revitalization of that corridor, and Queens can be a part of that. So, um, I'll stop here. Um, we're happy to answer any questions. Um, we're happy to answer any questions. There's a lot of due diligence that still has to be done between now and, um, March. And again, I think the commitment that Darlena and I offer to you and, and everyone that's, that resides in Waihewa and the, the general community that rely on those healthcare services, that we are committed to making sure that the right healthcare services are there, reliable healthcare services are provided, and that we can extend the services and specialties that we have across our entire system, which is now nearly 10,000 people strong, um, to the community. So, um, it's a journey. We'll do this together, um, but appreciate all of the community's support.
Thank you for that. Oh, Darlene, I think is going to talk next?
No, I think Jason said everything. We're just here to answer questions and, um, we're, we're so humbled and happy to be here this evening.
And ditto on that. Let me go to our board members first. Board members, any questions? TJ.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate all of your work. Mr. Cunningham, thank you so much for being part of our community. I just had a couple of questions and you can, um, they're real easy questions. I didn't hear anything about the Waihewa Hospital thrift store building. I'm not sure if that's part of the property or not. And also will this be a teaching hospital? I, I'm sorry. Will this be a teaching hospital? And will there be use of any of the usable equipment that's in the long-term care side? Whether it be, um, for, uh, future use by Queens as it takes over Waihewa General Hospital? Or whether it be used by a nonprofit that can make use of any, um, usable inventory there?
Yeah, I think what I can share is that we are buying all the assets that, uh, Waihewa, uh, General Hospital encompasses. So the thrift store, the gas station, the church that are on the back properties. Um, at this point, we don't have any intention of doing anything with those facilities other than allowing them to continue as they are. The thrift store does provide an opportunity, a very prime, um, opportunity to build something in the future. We just don't know what that is at this point. As, as it relates to teaching, um, Queens is the predominant education location. So we're not part of the medical school. We're not part of the nursing school, but we do have residents, fellows, nursing students, ancillary students that rotate through our facility. So we provide the, the, the locations for students to, to, to be educated and, and learn about patient care. There's no reason why we couldn't rotate people through. I think again, it'll be mostly emergency services and then we'll think about what are the other services? Pharmacies is a potential, labs are potentials for phlebotomy. But again, this is really an exciting time because it gives us a lot of opportunities to, to determine how we can best serve the community, keep people in the community, use it the location for education and training, um, like we do at all of our facilities. I'm sorry, I think the last question was about the infrastructure. And are there parts of the infrastructure that we would continue to use? Is that correct?
Um, actually it was about the usable equipment, but I think you said that it is part of an, it is an asset that you folks will take over. So I'm sure something good will come out of it because we like assets in our community.
I, I think the one thing you can rely on is that, so Darlene is our Chief Operating Officer. She and the rest of the clinical team, so she's a nurse by background. She can share more about that. But our clinical teams have a very high standard. If you've ever been to any of our facilities, you know, we're very proud about the care that we provide. We're proud about the investments we make in technology and, and development. And so they've already had a chance to go through the facility multiple times. Um, we are already upgrading the electronic medical record, the CT scanner, the pharmacy, the lab equipment. So at a minimum, the, the basic vitals, um, and the things that you need to be a really high functioning emergency department and, and provide emergent, urgent care are going to be replaced. And as we develop, things like MRI and surgical suites, we can evaluate whether, you know, when, when and how are the right times to do so.
Mahalo, mahalo Nui. And it's so, um, it's so heartwarming to know that our King and Queens legacy of providing medical services for, for our people will soon be in the nine, six, seven, eight, six community to help those in and around our community. So thank you very much and we look forward to the next 120 days and to another 120 something years with Queens Hospital here in Waihewa. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Michelle.
Thank you so much for your purchase. This is wonderful. Um, so I just want to make sure I understand correctly. Is the buildings that are there eventually will all be knocked down and rebuilt? And is long-term care being considered at all?
So we know that buildings A and B, which are the long-term care, are vacated at this point. And I think that our, our engineering assessments show that there's the amount of mold and asbestos and lead that's embedded in those facilities, that we should build something brand new. So those will be torn down. It's the first thing you're probably going to start to see, um, on that campus. And like I said, don't be alarmed because again, we, we need to spend probably the next 18 to 24 months evaluating what are the services the community needs? If we were to build long-term care, is that something the community would embrace? If we were to rebuild an imaging center, an orthopedic center? I know that at some point there was discussion about making that a geriatric campus. Are those things that the community would embrace? And we have a lot of resources, um, market data about where patients that live in the Waihewa zip codes and other surroundings of codes where they receive their service, um, that help inform us what's the best way to use our resources? So I, I can't answer it specifically today, but I know that over the next couple of years, we will work with the community to evaluate what are the things that, that would be the most successful, the most needed, um, relative to the community's health.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Uh, Dean, board member Dean, do you have any questions?
No ma'am, thank you for asking. Great presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from the community virtually?
I have questions.
Yes, go ahead.
So in 1975, I was born out of Waihewa General Hospital. And so looking at the outcome, where we can put all the important processes in to where are we? Because I have friends who worked in the hospital. I have close friends who are on the administrative level. What do we want to have Waihewa Hospital, the General Hospital become? Right? So let's look at the outcome. That's where I am at. Maybe we, we aren't going to have babies born there anymore because my Kiki were born at Kapialani. But at the end of the day, I have family and friends who are in long-term care. Are we going to shut down? So we as a community need to know what are we going to do with this hospital? We all have to engage what we want for the future of this hospital. And it's sad to think that we'll just wrap it up and be like, oh, let's just turn it over. Because many of us in this community were born there. That is all, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you very much for your sharing.
Thank, thank you. I, I think that that's, that's very fair. And, and I can't speak to, you know, what's transacted over the last 20 years, but what we've watched. And, and I've been in the community eight years. Darlena's been here, you know, for over 30 years. 25 years. But, but for those, for those of us that have been in the healthcare community for a long time, we've watched services at Waihewa get closed down. I, I think that we can agree, and hopefully we can all agree, that the vision for the future is not what it was in the past. That you want a healthcare system, a hospital that you can be proud of, one that you can rely on, one that when you need services, when you have an emergency and you wake up in the middle of the night and the ambulance comes and brings you to a facility, it doesn't bypass Waihewa. That it comes to Waihewa because the level of service, the neurologist, the cardiologist, the traumatologist, the people you need when you need them the most are there. And I think that that's what Queens can provide. What we are excited about is that there's a location. There's a beautiful campus, a beautiful location that has a tremendous opportunity to rebuild services that it has lost over the last 20 years. So I don't, I can't say that babies will ever be born there again. I can't say that the geriatric skilled nursing population will ever be there again. But that's the exploration that we need to do together. So I, I hope that when you, when you go to sleep tonight, that you can think about what the possibilities of the future could be? Not thinking about what it immediately be. Because I, I know that in the next six months, we will be taking down some buildings. We're going to be taking down buildings that aren't being used. We're taking down buildings that cannot provide modern healthcare today. But we will be, and we are doing it now. We're embedding technology. My IT team, Darlena's IT team is putting together and, and programming the technology so that on the first day that we open, there will be an electronic medical record. Doesn't exist today. And so hopefully, you know, that, that the community can see that the investments that we're making, and they're not small investments. It's 70 plus million dollars that we'll put in in the first couple of years. And then once we decide what the next thing is that we need to build there, we're, we're talking hundreds of millions of, of dollars of investment that will make a facility, a hospital, that the community is proud of, the community can rely on. And I think that's the word that you have from us, re- representing all of Queens.
Chair.
Thank you, Jason. Yeah, hold on, hold on one second. I'm going to come to our board member here. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Uh, I think one thing we need to keep in mind, uh, even though we are a community hospital currently and have been since 1945, the hospital would have been closed this year were it not for the support and the backing we're receiving from Queens. Uh, because it's extremely important, we wouldn't have a birthing center or anything else without Queens. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, I'm just going to go to our, our audience here. Uh, any questions for this portion of the presentation? Nothing, anything else from our board? Okay, then I, I just have, um, a couple of questions and we can wrap this up because I know it's been a long night for everyone. Um, and we are on a tight schedule. But, um, I, I do want to say that it is exciting. And Brian knows because after the last few years, we've, you know, we've kind of, um, tried many things, you know, and many opportunities, that possibilities and what if, what if? And so to come to this point, to come to this juncture where an agreement has been signed on and there is, um, you know, hope, you know, for not just the hospital, but for our community is outstanding. I think just to have that hope to start off. And I just want to share just a little, real quick, um, tiny story about this. Um, and Brian might remember this, I'm not sure. But, um, you know, there was a time when, when the long-term care was getting closed. And, um, I went to see Brian because my auntie was in there. She was just finishing, uh, she was getting close to her, her stage. But, you know, the, the staff was fantastic, I mean, in the long-term care. And yes, it was old and everything, but it was a very comfortable and loving situation. But one day I was, uh, I went to the post office, which is right across the hospital. And it was a light chaser and this beautiful rainbow came out. I mean, it's a stunning, it's a rainbow and it went right over the hospital. And I took a photo and I said, my gosh, I said, I have hope. That is going to be, and I sent that photo to you and it's a, it's a perfect, it's like a perfect bright rainbow over Waihewa General Hospital. If you ever want to use it, I have that photo, but it's, it's a stunningly just perfect. And, um, and I think that it came to this point where, you know, good things are, are still coming this way. So thank you very much for what Queens is doing for our community, whether it's the young or the old or our grandmas or aunties or just our neighbors. Thank you so much for bringing hope to our community. Looking forward to working with you. Thank you. Um, Brian, you have any, you want, any closing remarks on this portion? No? I can't hear him. I think you're muted, Brian.
Thank you all. Appreciate the questions. Appreciate the support. Appreciate, um, your, your vision for hope, uh, Chair. I, I truly believe in the word, uh, of Jason and Darlene and everybody at Queens and, and their being representatives of Queen Emma, King Kamehameha the fourth. Uh, I, I think this is an incredible time for the evolution of Waihewa General Hospital. Yes, we, we do mourn sort of the past as we stand on the shoulders of everyone who came before us. Uh, as, as your board member said, Joe Francher, if not for Queens, in this past year, Waihewa General would have closed its doors. This would have been a much sadder, uh, situation for Waihewa General. And so we are just so excited, delighted and appreciative that an organization such as Queens Health System has, has sort of seen this vision and are going to incorporate Waihewa General into their inspiring mission, uh, long into the future. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank, please thank your Board of Directors for us as well. I'm sure they're a big part of that decision-making. So thank you for that. Aloha, everyone. Thank you for being with us, uh, into this late evening. Appreciate your time. Okay, we're going to move on to item B on our presentation, which is our update on our Waihewa Freshwater State Recreation Area Project. The community outreach efforts have been completed and the draft conceptual will be shared by HHF Planners. Berlin, are you there? And then we also have Scott and Renee.
Scott, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'd lost the, I, I think I lost. Yeah, Jeannie, can you hear me?
Yes, you're loud and clear.
All right, well, thank you. Yeah, Terry, Shikawa and other members of the board, good evening. Um, um, my name is Scott Eizer. I'm with, uh, HHF Planners in, in Honolulu. We're a planning consultant firm. We are working with the Department of State Parks on an, a, a master plan for, uh, Waihewa, uh, Freshwater State Park. Uh, with me tonight is Cory Orr, uh, also at HHF Planners. And we also have some members of, uh, State Parks in the audience. If we get to questions that, um, I can't manage or Cory can't manage, we'll, we'll toss them over to, uh, State Parks folks. Um, we are going, we have a, a brief, uh, PowerPoint, uh, presentation. So I'm going to have Cory, uh, pull that up right now to share a screen if we can. So, uh, our, our first slide here, I hope you can see this. It is a representation of the extent of the boundaries of, uh, Waihewa Freshwater State Park. It's approximately 67 acres. The, the red, uh, point there is the main entrance off of Walker Avenue. Uh, you can see the Hiko Transformer and, and Lona Kila Pacific are also identified with, um, uh, labels. Uh, you, uh, there's also a, a label down in the lower left-hand corner identifying the existing boat ramp. Okay, next slide, Cory, please. So I'm hoping you can see this. It's a representation of the process that we've had over the last two years. Um, we first came to the, the board in September of 21, just announcing the beginning of the project. Uh, we have had four, uh, meetings with our stakeholder group. Our last meeting was last week. We've gone through a number of different community, uh, consultations, publicizing, uh, the plan and asking for comments, including a virtual open house and a pop-up event at the park. Uh, we've conducted, uh, parking analysis and traffic analysis in and around the park. And we've gone through a couple of different iterations of the conceptual plan, which we're going to share with you in a moment. But I did want to just get through the, the process and where we are. On the far right-hand side of the process chart is our second neighborhood board briefing. So, um, that's where we are today. And once we are done, uh, going, uh, presenting to the board, we will start engaging and preparing a, a draft environmental assessment that will implement the conceptual plan that we're going to share with you very shortly. that will implement the conceptual plan that we're going to share with you very shortly. So the expectation is that sometime uh, mid-year of next year, the final environmental assessment would be completed. And the Department of State Parks could then embark on uh, some design projects for some of the features that will be included in the plan. Okay Cory, next slide, please. Okay, so this is a representation of the plan. I, I believe uh, we have sent uh, these slides uh, to the board so that um, i- if, if you have the opportunity later on and you want to look at uh, some of the elements of uh, the, the plan, you, you can do so. I'm gonna turn the conversation over to Cory and she's going to explain in a little bit of be uh, more detail, some of the elements of the plan. So Cory, go ahead.
Um, I'm having issues with the zooming in on it, so I'm just gonna try to, I hope this, this is visible here, because as I get bigger, you start losing the, the, the colorations on it. Um, so this is, this is the proposed plan that we're showing and it includes some of the existing features and some things that are currently under construction and proposed um, features. So um, let's start at the main entrance at Walker Avenue. You drive in and you have the caretaker's residence and the DLR base yard on your left. And there's an existing restroom on your right as you're driving in. Um, those are existing. Take a right turn and it takes you down to the boat ramp here with the trailer parking. Um, and that's, and there's a, the boat ramp comes down and people are fishing along this little shoreline uh, in this little bay area, embayment area. Um, are there existing facilities within the park? Primarily parking. Uh, as you, instead of turning right to the boat ramp, if you continue on towards Lanaquila Pacific, they recently completed these 25 new parking stalls. Um, you can see it in red. Try to zoom in a little bit, see what happens. Maybe that's a little better. Um, it says 25 parking stalls in red and they're putting in some um, picnic tables and some new benches. So that's the existing um, development within the park right now. It's primarily used, I want to say for fishing and then very passive recreation. People come and exercise, they eat their lunch, they spend some time outdoors. Um, that's, those are the main uses. What we're proposing in terms of fishing and walking and exercising, you can see that um, the, this pink dotted line throughout the park, it's about one and a half miles total of new trails, walkways, pathways. Most of them start at the parking and, and take you through a route that leads you towards the water. Well, in line with that, we're proposing different spots for fishing pads. And those are those green, I'm sorry, the green dashed areas are where um, slopes are steep. Um, the, the fishing pads and fishing areas are these blue triangles. And we've cited these in line with um, staff from DLR's fisheries. And, and they gave us those specific locations that they thought would be ideal to put in some fishing pads. Um, the pads would be potentially floating. We haven't gone through the design for the pads yet. Um, except that the intent is to make it safer because we do know the, the banks are slippery and they're steep. And the idea is that design could be done to provide additional access in a safer way to expand the fishing. Um, other things we're providing in terms, or we're proposing in terms of facilities, one of the main ones would be a, a outdoor amphitheater space for performances. We're envisioning something 200 to 250 people audience. It would be an outdoor, open-air type facility um, that would fit within the character of the park right now. And it would be tucked into the natural topography. It slopes somewhat down from the bathroom um, towards the, the boat ramp. And it would be, so the audience would be facing towards the west and the performers would be facing up to, into the park, looking sort of towards the um, Lanaquila Pacific and towards the Hiko Transformer Station. So you can see that it's, it's in this area uh, between the, between the restroom and the boat ramp section. Other things that are being proposed uh, would be more interior within the park. There are two covered pavilions. Open-air pavilions meant for groups to gather, could be community groups. Um, could be a family wanting to, to have a gathering for the day. So these are those green, green roofs facilities. Um, one is, one is closer to Lanaquila Pacific and there's one more centrally located. Other main feature I'd like to point out is uh, disc golf space. We have about three and a half acres. And it's this green, green section here next to the um, next to some of the new pathways. And the disc golf space would be, what we're envisioning is clearing some trees, creating some course areas, but it wouldn't be a permanent course. It'd be temporary where you could get a permit and um, permit for the day, come in, put up your um, your own portable stands, nets they're called, um, and, and you could enjoy a game of disc golf. Finally, um, DLR, in our conversations with them, suggested a field office building. Um, they don't have anything out in Wauhaua and it would be helpful for them to have a, an office that they could come to if they're working at the park. Fisheries would be working out here or State Park staff needs a, needs a space for the day. Um, and that field office would be located in this somewhat open area next to the transformer station and between Lanaquila Pacific. And that would also help to um, have a presence, have more, more people within the park in this area. Um, additional features that would be added, you can see these little, they're very tiny. They're picnic tables and picnic benches. Some are covered. Um, some of them would be ADA accessible as well. And I think I've covered everything that we're proposing in the plan.
I, I think you did Cory.
I think I missed the signage.
Oh, you.
There's also, there's, there's, there's also signage. Those are those um, pink asterisks. And those would be signage for wayfinding and also to highlight some of the historic and cultural um, features within the park. I covered everything. Thank you.
You, you did. And, and I, I would just add that um, you know, the, our, our stakeholder group has been very involved in discussing uh, the, the, the features of the, of, of the park moving forward. Uh, State Parks folks have been very open to uh, listening to what the community has to say. And they have all been very involved in uh, thinking about the, the future of this very important part of the, the Wauhaua community. Um, that is the more official part of our, our presentation. And we'd like to open it up for any questions you might have at this point.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I have a number of questions. My first one, when you're talking about all these pathways and so forth, is this going to be cement pathways? And the second question is, what is security like in these areas? And my third question is, how much is the cost? And my fourth question is, how many people do you see using this area?
Okay, so your first question had to do with the surface of the uh, the, the pathway system. And uh, Renee, can you, can you address that?
Hi, aloha everyone. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi Renee.
Hi aloha. Um, so the pathways, we don't know right now. We don't know if it's going to be hardened pathways or more of a natural type of pathway. Um, basically there are already corridors. We call them corridors, but it's already maintained under the Hiko lines. And so basically we want to keep them open spaces and open corridors to encourage a lot of walking and, and exercising. Um, you know, the, the whole point is to create more passive recreational spaces. Um, and, and within our nature, within our parks. Um, the second one was security. Um, right now, we have a live-in caretaker, right? Ray's doing an excellent job. And I think over the years, whenever we've come to the neighborhood board to present or when we have activities out at the park, we often hear that with the presence of the caretaker and with Ray, that things have been um, well-maintained. Issues at the park has been nil to minimal. Um, I think even truancy and loitering is, is nil to minimal, right? We, we really don't get much complaints. Um, so, so security, we're, we're not providing necessarily additional security. I think our intent is to provide more um, recreational opportunities in these spaces, I think. Um, uh, so yeah, for those who know me, right? I'm, I'm three generations into Wauhaua. We're up in Wauhaua. Um, and we access the lake from all over. I mean, not to encourage truancy or, or loitering, but we, we often went through the middle school. We went fishing and so ideally, I, you know, the philosophy is that when we use these spaces as recreational spaces, we eliminate a lot of the illegal behaviors, right? And, and my hope is, I think our hope is that the more we use the back end again, start using that area, that we're not going to see any um, illeg- illegal or delinquent behaviors. Um,
Well, Renee, there was a, a question about cost and we haven't, we haven't worked on that completely yet.
Yep.
There, there will be a more complete discussion of the cost of these facilities during the presentation of uh, the environmental assessment. Uh, so that would be in the first iteration, the draft environmental assessment, which we hope uh, will come out uh, sometime during the early spring of uh, 2024. And I'm sorry, I forgot your fourth question. If, if you could repeat that one, please.
What is, um, how many people do you think, what are you anticipating? Uh, how many people would use this?
Um, you know, I think, I think when we did the, the outreach and we did the stakeholder meetings, I think the amphitheater was a um, a great opportunity to create a, a, a venue and a space for more entertainment and whatnot um, within the park. And I'm not too sure if you attended the Day at the Lake in 2019, right before COVID hit. And um, Wauhaua Fresh, one of the nonprofits in Wauhaua, um, partnered with DLR in hosting that Day at the Lake. Um, and on any given time, we had at least three, 300, 350, right, on any given time that day. Um,
And, and I think Renee, that, that would be the, like the maximum number of people there would be in the park.
No, not necessarily. Um, we still had a lot of parking, a lot of available parking. We utilized spaces all the way down from the boat ramp to the top, to the bottom. We utilized the spaces where currently the disc golf space and, you know, that area. And, and keep in mind, um, for, for 17th years now, possibly even 20 years, 15 to 20 years, the fishing has been very limited in that area because the water level has been down. So I, I don't know how familiar you are with the lake. Um, but back in the day, the water level was really high, right? And, and um, I'm reminded how we were a, a site for um, national fishing tournaments um, in our reservoir or in our lake. And so, of course, those are all the things that we would like to bring back, right? To, to encourage a lot of this recreational activities within these spaces. So, so those activities didn't happen at Day at the Lake, right? Because the water level's too low, but Day at the Lake, um, the Hiko Day with uh, imagine a day without water. That was a little bit more smaller scale activity, but um, you know, Wauhaua Fresh and I think other nonprofit groups want to bring annual events back to the park. Um, the amphitheater would probably be designed more to a natural design rather than hard surface, concretes or whatnot. Um, I don't know though, we don't know. Um, we do recognize that we won't have necessarily evening activities or permit evening activities with this. So if ever there was an event or somebody wanting to take out a special use permit for the space, we would, we would put an end time to the permit, right? Which probably would be no later than what the park closes at, what, 6:45, 7:00 on any given um, season. And as far as the cost, Scott was accurate, but let me just add that we don't have any construction costs. We, we don't have construction funds to build out anything right now. We don't have any appropriation.
Oh, thanks Renee. Um, yeah, you're good. Okay, Joe.
Considering the, the uh, the width of this proposed park area with pavilions and everything, are utilities going to be anticipated for the uh, open-air pavilions and anything else further in?
No, um,
Water and water.
Yep, so uh, so Cory, with the 25 parking stalls, um, we're gonna put um, a a, I, I, we call it a silver bullet and I'm trying to hesitate to say that because I don't even know what the real name is. But it's, it's a, it's a, it's bathrooms, it's a trailer bathroom. That's what it is, trailer bathroom. Um, and, and we do not have, um, I don't, we're not putting any utility lines and I don't know if we're hooking up to it. Melissa from our engineering department, division rather, um, I think we're, we're, Melissa, do you have the details on that?
Uh, so for the bathroom trailer, we, we're not uh, hooking up to any utilities. Um, it's gonna be solar um, powered, so no electricity will be hooked on. Um, and then the bathroom will be, we need to be um, uh, cleaned out every so often. Um, yeah.
Okay, and we recognize that one issue is um, the current comfort station, right? Like, like statewide, most of our comfort stations, we had to accommodate for ADA and so that we usually probably took away a stall. And so if you go in there, there's only like one stall on the women's and I, men's, I think the same. So ideally, we'd like to expand the comfort station footprint. Um, so that's always an option. Sorry, what was your question? Sorry, it's past my head.
The, I think the question was, are, are we intending, is the state intending to have uh, electricity?
No, oh, oh, sorry.
To, to the pavilions.
No, 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 no. As of right now, as of right now, no. In fact, if you, if, if you went recently, there shelters over a few of the tables already. So that pavilion, I think we often So that pavilion, I think we often talked about, do we want to drag utilities? But we haven't made a decision yet. So we don't know if it's an open pavilion. What is the purpose of the pavilion? In terms of, is it a picnic? Is it where people can do like 20 to 30, you know, a party of 20 to 30, small gathering, whatnot? We, we haven't gone that far in, in discussing those details. But for the most part, we're not, we're, there's not much utilities or we're not adding any utility lines or water.
Any other questions from the board? Go ahead, TJ.
Thank you. And Renee, thank you guys all for coming out today. And yes, Ray does an outstanding job as the park caregiver out there. I wanted to ask, though, I know earlier you spoke about, someone spoke about the fishing paths and how they will try to, I guess, make the embankments safer. Will there be any outreach to remove the encampments that are currently there along the fishing paths? Because right now, those who visit the freshwater park are not even able to use a majority of those areas where fishing used to be done from the embankment.
TJ, maybe, maybe offline, you and I can talk only because as of recently, about a week ago, even two weeks ago, we, from our reports from Ray and our program manager, there are no homeless encampments on our side of the park. And so when we walked around and looked, we don't see any encampments on our, you know, what, what, what touches and boards our TMK. And, and from, according to Ray, he doesn't get any problems. So they're not making home on our embankments, maybe across. But as far as the fishing pads are concerned, just know that we haven't figured out the exact designs. If it's going to be, it's probably not going to be floating, but we're not X-ing that possibility out yet, right? It could just be, again, natural pads to concrete pads to stuff. But yeah, I, and, and again, maybe offline, you can help identify those areas. But when we brought it up and talked about it as of recently, and it came up a couple of times this month, the report back to us was that there was no homeless encampments within our park, TMK.
Okay, great. I would actually like to do that. And I would also like to invite another outreach team that has actually been going out there as recently as today and feeding them. So you have my contact information. So Renee, I'd be happy to meet with you folks whenever you're ready.
I, I saw that group. In fact, there were like five to six cars that just pulled over to the side on the bridge, right when I was coming into Waihaua this, this afternoon.
That wasn't them. But, but I do know that there are, that there are a number of outreach organizations that are now more frequently visiting Waihaua. So anyway, happy to have a conversation later. I know you have my contact information.
Yeah. If I don't get ahold of you, can you call me or email me? And I'll put, I'll put my information in the, in the chat.
Yeah, I think I have it. But thanks, Renee, and happy Thanksgiving to you all.
Yep. Same to you guys. Mahalo, everyone.
Any other questions from the board? Questions? Dean, are you still on? Did you have a question?
Renee, can I ask a couple of questions then before we go to the public? I just want to just kind of run through a couple of things. Roughly, how many parking stalls are there or will there be in, in the freshwater park?
Oh, I apologize.
Cory, do you know the answer to that question? You're on mute.
Marked stalls.
I'm sorry, I had a, I had a issue with trying to unmute myself. There's about 80 car vehicle parking stalls and about 15, I'm sorry, it's right here on the, on the plan, 18 boat trailer parking stalls. So 81 vehicle stalls and 18 boat trailer stalls.
So in general, when the park gets developed, then the, then generally you, the anticipation is the largest group that could be in there at any one time would be 81 in terms of having a parking spot then, right?
No, so, and what we did-
Having a big event.
Yeah. So what we did with that big event, right, that did the lake in 2019, was we coordinated and organized parking in unmarked areas, right, which is totally fine, right? We, we allow that often. And so there is a lot of unmarked areas and spaces to organize parking. Yeah, they're not, they're not marked.
Okay.
Right? So where, yeah.
Okay, no, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted a basic, okay. And then the other thing is when we were out there a few years ago, one of the concerns that came up, and then at one of the meetings I went to, it was about the boat ramp, improvements to the boat ramp. So is that part of the plan?
I don't know. That's a Division of Aquatics Resources question. I, I can't answer for them.
Okay. Now, I'm just thinking, because earlier we talked about how important it was for the, the boating, the boating component of this facility. So
You know, I thought they improved it a few years ago. But Gina, if you don't mind, if you could just email me the questions that we can't answer, you could just email me as well as TJ, yeah, I don't know how, I mean, I understand the sunshine law. But if, if we want, if you guys want to meet out there and it has to be separate, our team is willing to come out there. If, if, if HHF can't make it, a few of the DLNR people can meet you guys out there to give you guys a walk around on, on what we're going to do, what we intend to do, what interpretive signs will be looking like. Yeah, so, so not a problem. I know, I think, I think sunshine law only allows two of you guys at one time or something like that, right?
And just, and it doesn't have to be onsite, but yeah, it can. But if not, I guess my last question is, you know, the area earlier in tonight's meeting, we were talking about the dilapidated conditions of a couple of structures that are at the corner of Avocado and Kamehameha Highway.
Yes.
So when you're saying that there are no encampments, I can tell you on a daily basis, I see people, you know, when I, whether I'm driving out to work or coming back, you know, they're walking by the smoke shop and then they're going down below and down below and
So, yeah. So those are not our TMK, yeah. That's not within our park space, even those embankments
Correct.
are not within our park space. I'm not saying that we're not willing to partner with people, especially me and Eric being from Waihaua. Of course, we want to do our best to, to help out our community. But those people who are in that area, in the bridge area, walking by our sign, by that small little park by the bridge.
Yeah.
The only way to access the park is through our park, through Walker Ave.
Well, and I get that. And hazard to Eric too. But I guess my, my thought is because, because it is, it may not be your portion of the property, it, you know, may not be, might be federal, whatever. But the thing is, it, it is part of that whole park, no matter what, you know, you can't. And so visually, because you hear that people say, oh, you know, who, you know, the kind of, you know, uji or whatever it is that they're thinking. But, but unless they think that the area is clear and safe, you know, that has to be part of the, of the discussion as well of, you know, moving forward. Because this is exciting that we can, we can make, make something out of this park that will be welcoming and bright and not so dark. And, you know, the trees are, it's like spooky movie kind trees. You know, but it's like, you know, so it's like, although simple things, I think you guys are doing a great job in, in pulling all of this together. But I really think you probably got to get all the, all the property owners on board to help so we can clean up the, you know, the, the area, basically.
Yep. No, I, I agree. I agree. That's something we've got to work together, right, with all the different agencies. And, and certainly, I, I'd be the first to say, hey, you know, I'll come to the table and discuss how we can move forward with this. That area, right, right, is that, that's Avocado, right, when you turn off the bridge?
Correct.
From my understanding, there's, there, there's an appropriation, and I, I believe, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, David or anybody else on, on, online, Senator De La Cruz provided appropriation, provided funding so that DoCare could develop that space as a DoCare site. And, and, and I think that's great to have DoCare's presence out there and any other division that would share space there. But you're absolutely right. Whatever we can do to, to help each other. Inside, you know, I was only speaking for inside the park, but definitely if, if, if there's residual effect that impacts the use of the park, then by all means, yeah, let's address it.
Right on. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board or community members? Yes, go ahead.
I was wondering if the activities and facilities will be ADA compliant?
Yes. So, so when you see, when you see activities, are you talking about the pavilion or the parking and/or the shelters and picnic benches?
The pavilions, well, in addition to the areas designated for fishing?
Yeah.
And if you're going to be doing improvements, will, will it be ADA compliant so that if someone wants to take their, you know, spouse or whoever to go fishing, will it be accessible or like a wheelchair?
Yep. So we, you know, we've, we've talked about putting an ADA fishing pad, right, which would then have to be cement and slopes correctly and whatnot. And we've discussed a couple areas where if we did do it, we, where would we do it? That, though, will come in the design phase, right, in terms of getting the engineering and expertise to make that decision on where best could we put that fishing pad?
Thank you. My second question is in the future, in the near future, along with the cultural component, will there be an educational component? Where the area schools from elementary to intermediate and high school can do a nice little excursion there where they can be taught about the area, how the fish, because it's, it's almost like a you know, an area where they're going to be bringing in the fish, how that processes. Because, you know, we're, we're trying to teach our kids resilience and sustainability. And so if they can learn more about how it's done, they, there'll be, you know, additional tools in their, in their own, in their own lives. So, DLNR will be looking at that and education component for our kids?
Yeah. So, so thank you for that question. And, and maybe let me just share a tidbit real quick. DLNR has educational opportunities, right, in our parks. And Waihaua, normally, we're in different settings, not necessarily in Waihaua on a freshwater park, right? But we do have an interpretive coordinator for our island who does educational site visits with schools. DLNR has partnered for, I believe, over 30-something years with Waihaua Middle School, and there's a hatchery there. And so they've partnered, they were down there at the, at the Board of Water Supply, Imagine a Day Without Water. And if ever you wanted to do educational site visit with schools and groups, that is certainly available. And we do have, if you want to email me, I can put you in contact with him. His name is Kit Kai Mar. But in DLNR, we have different divisions. So usually forestry, aquatics, and state parks all has educational opportunities to partner with schools, groups, nonprofits, whatnot, to do outreach or educational site visits. Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Renee. Thank you, everyone. I'm just going to, we have board, board member Dean with his hand up, and that's going to be the last question because we're, we're at 9:22. I'm very sorry. But so Dean, last question.
Traffic impact. Have you folks resolved, like you're talking about bringing school kids in, heavy buses? Are you guys going to be allowing commercial companies to do any commercial fishing activities there? And also, I would suggest working with city management parking traffic already on the designated one side of the road for parking only. Because as you know, when you get into the park area, it narrows really tight. Have you folks already put that into the works?
There will be an, an analysis of the traffic impacts addressed in the environmental assessment.
Okay, okay. And then nice hearing from you, Renee. I'm really excited about this. I have, I agree with TJ. Ray has, and his entire staff have really, really done and are doing a great job down there at the park. It's a good rest area that, you know, to check out and just relax a little bit, but to have a nice little lunch over there. But it's just, you know, something that I, I like where you see a lot of DoCare officers, HPD is constantly patrolling. And yeah, the homeless has really disappeared from the area. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mahalo, everyone.
Thank you. I think at this point, Corinne or Scott or Renee, if you have any closing remarks, because it's been a great presentation.
Thank you, Jeannie, for the opportunity to let you know what we're doing. And we, you will be receiving a copy of the draft environmental assessment, and we'll let you know when that comes out.
Perfect. That'd be perfect. Looking forward to continuing to work with you folks. Thank you so much. Thanks for everyone who's been online too. You can still hang around, but we do have a few minutes more of stuff that we got to get going.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, aloha.
And happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays, everyone. Okay, we're going to move on to item seven, our elected officials. And, and thank you very much to Kevin. You've been waiting. You've been first on the list. But if you have a report, we'll take you up now on your report. Microphone's that way.
Good evening, Chair, board members, community members. Kevin O'J, I'm the mayor's representative. Couple of highlights from this month's mayor's newsletter. There's an affordable housing update for across Oahu. Section on the county mayor's tour of the Lahaina wildfire area. Comment about a million-dollar grant for art on Oahu that we received from the Bloomberg Philanthropy. How to weigh in on Oahu's climate strategy and new city services available in Capoei. Mayor Blangiardi's newsletter can be found the front table. I've got some or online at oneohahu.org. A quick announcement, the Neighborhood Commission Office is hiring Neighborhood Board Assistants to engage in public awareness for community support. Neighborhood assistants help coordinate with Neighborhood Board Chairs and produce written reports to members of the public. Please send your resume to nco@honolulu.gov or you can call the Neighborhood Commission at 808-768-3710. Some follow-ups to the last meeting. Member Yamamoto noted that the striping for bicycle lanes are fading along California Avenue between Kamehameha Highway and Main Street. And the city should consider eliminating them entirely as it may not be worth the continued maintenance cost. Member Yamamoto also reported the most riders either use it inappropriately or avoid it altogether or ride on the sidewalk. In response to those concerns, the- In response to those concerns, the Department of Transportation completed a site inspection in these areas. And it also observed fading bike lanes. And in response, a legal paint work order number three two one three seven was issued to the Department of Facilities Maintenance to restart the bicycle lane markings. For status of the work order, you can call the Department of Facilities Management at eight oh eight seven six eight thirty six twenty-one or seven six eight thirty six twenty-two. President Leanne Baker heard that the Alea Bridge, known as now known as Achieve Zero, located at one twenty-three Mango Street, was having issues, uh, connecting their sewer line, Chair. I think you also mentioned that there was, there were other issues affecting that property. An update from the Department of Planning and Permitting is that the trenching permit and construction plans for that property have been, uh, approved. And the proposed sewer lateral serving that property has also been approved. Uh, while the SDD does not have any other permitting requirements, the LUPD may have, uh, some regarding that project. Uh, dirt bikes and motorbikes that we already talked about tonight, I think member Harvest on the, on the, uh, screen requested that the city collaborate with the state to implement some sort of licensee requirements for dirt bikes and motorbikes, uh, to assist the HPD. Uh, unfortunately, however, regulation and licensing of motor vehicles, including dirt bikes, requires state legislation. And, um, the city is unable to coordinate with law enforcement regarding licensing of dirt bikes without new laws being enacted. Uh, also a note that, as you all know, dirt bikes aren't permitted to operate on public roads or highways. Um, there was another question from a community member regarding, uh, her frustration that the park department's website uh, to search for upcoming events in the community, um, didn't allow you to search by geographic region. The DPR, the Department of Parks, is still, uh, researching that. Hopefully, I'll have an update on that the next meeting. Um, that's all I have. Oh, just one quick announcement. City Lights and Tree Lighting Ceremony is December second at Honolulu Halli. Um, that's always a big event. Hopefully, we'll see you there. And otherwise, happy Thanksgiving and happy holidays.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? None. Any questions, uh, Dean?
Sir, the Waheou Swimming Pool, the water heater, once again, is improperly not working. Um, people who do go swimming, especially our seniors who go into for morning exercise, are getting into a cold water pool. You know, uh, the the pool needs to have it, once again, put on a timer, not relying on someone to come in three hours before, turn on the switch, then turn it off, because by the time it opens to the public, the water is back to like sixty-two degrees or colder. Uh, secondly, uh, I was also informed by some of the, uh, senior citizens who go there, that they were informed that the, uh, now this comes from them, the mayor is not going to fix the water heater. Okay. Well, I'd like to invite the mayor to come out for a morning swim. It'll be just like taking an ice bath.
He may take you up on that, you know.
I know, I know. He's he's kind of a polar bear guy. So I I mean, uh, it it's just one of those things, you know, we have so many people that do actually still utilize that pool, and that pool has been in our community for eons. And Jeannie can attest to that because her dad was one of the big, uh, implementers in getting that pool built. But, uh, the other thing that also was, uh, was brought to my attention was the, uh, lift chair, the handicap lift chair. It's, uh, becoming temperamental. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't work. And I understand that the pool has requested for, um, and a new chair. But, uh, I, once again, I don't know what's funding or what, but they were told they're not gonna get it. So if you could follow up on that, please, we'd really appreciate it.
Be my pleasure, member Harvest.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you much. Thank you much.
Actually, Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Quick, if you could follow up with, um, the park director about the pool being warmed, because last year I made it my personal task to make sure that the pool was in working order and it was heating. And at that time, they were missing a part. They got the part, and for the latter part of February, if I'm not mistaken, the pool was actually being heated. So it would be great. I think Scott Campbell is his name.
Scott.
Scott Campbell. Yeah, if you could.
At Parks?
Oh, yeah, right over here. At the, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, he's not here. His office is right next door. But he, he, oh, Scott Coleman, excuse me, Scott Coleman, but he was, um, they did get the part. The pump or whatever was repaired, and our kupuna were in there last year in warm water. But please invite the mayor, maybe the government too, to come out in our nippy Waheou weather. This would be a great time. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Kevin. Okay, moving on to our next, uh, council member Matt Wires office. Hi, Kelly. Thank you for your patience. Uh, reminding everyone it is nine nine thirty-four.
No problem.
No pressure, no.
Yeah, no problem. Um, thank you, Chair and members of the board. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires office. Um, I'll try to make this quick. Um, the newsletters that I passed out, um, council member was so grateful to be a part of the Veterans Day Parade. Um, myself and the rest of our staff were, um, able to, uh, participate as well as, um, the fundraiser for Maui after the parade. Um, and council member also did, uh, be able to present the St. Louis and Sacred Heart, uh, combined marching band that won the, uh, best band for the parade. Um, on the back page, um, I believe mayor signed, um, bill forty-seven, which, uh, allows the manufactured compostables to be placed in the green wastelands. So we're definitely proud of that. Uh, and then a couple of updates, oh, the grants and aid, uh, that's coming up on December twenty-second. I believe that's Wednesday, the deadline. So if you know anyone, uh, maybe have them apply. I have the, uh, the link here on the, uh, web, on the newsletter. Um, a couple of things that were brought up earlier, um, I believe that was Teresa about Avocado Street. I will follow up with HPD. Um, that's like a long-going issue since the previous council member. Um, I am working with, uh, DPP, um, you know, to try to get some creative, uh, ways to kind of get this guy to comply. But, you know, you can't, the city can't force people to be good, uh, stewards and good neighbors. So I will follow up and then I'll keep you guys informed as well. Um, that man about Glen Avenue, he did mention it to me. So I don't know, you said that you guys were working on that from previous? Mr. Tamora. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm talking about the one up at the elementary school, because he brought that to my attention earlier.
Yeah, so that, that was several years ago when he tried to put it together.
He tried to put it together when we were, uh, working out the traffic situation in Waheou.
Okay.
Um, and then that one got kind of put on the side, and we were, you know, between DOT and DTS, you know, it was we'll work with you on this area, you know, these things, but, you know, so I was telling him that we can probably start it up again, and I'll, I'll start, I'll generate a letter to him and see.
You're gonna?
Yeah, I'll start it up. Yeah. And then, no, we'll keep in touch.
Okay, great. And then the other thing he brought up about Kilani Ave and Kane Street, I did tell him before the meeting started that someone else made a complaint about that. DTS did go out and do a traffic study, and they deemed it was unwarranted. I know he's not happy with my answer, but I really can't have DTS go out and do yet another traffic study. They just did it the ending of last year, I believe, and I think they wrapped it up earlier this year. So I'll send you all the paperwork.
Yes, please do. Thank you.
They sent me. Um, oh, and then the water heater pool. Um, so, yeah, our office is actually aware of that. The situation is that there's, I think there's some kind of gas leak or something earlier, and then it's just, pool manager is aware of it, but it's, it's, I don't know, I think because it's so old to get it fixed is I I'm not sure what they're planning to do. So it's not that we're not turning it on, and we're not using the heater, um, or the timer. It's just, there's something to do with the gas line. Likewise, for the showers, I believe there's some kind of issue with the showers as well. I mean, as far as heating up the water. So I think it's going to be a.
It could be a safety issue, kind of situation.
Yes, correct. That's it. If any of you have anything for.
Any quick questions for council member? Board member, any questions? Quick question? No. Dean, any quick question for council member Wires office?
No, thank you, Kelly, for the info.
No.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Then we're gonna move on. Thank you very much. Okay, um, Governor's Representative, uh, Kaleo is not here. Senator De La Cruz is Representative David. Hi, hi, David. Thank you for your patience.
Hi, uh, good evening, everyone, and happy holidays. Um, I just wanted to give an update on the coconut rhinoceros speedo. Uh, so from last month, we let the board know that CRB was spreading in central Oahu. Um, and actually, last week, uh, Senator and our office met with the residents of Royal Palm Drive because uh, DOA is actually doing an inspection tomorrow with their experts, um, and they're coming up with a plan to do treatment, uh, next week, actually, uh, the week following Thanksgiving weekend. Um, but what they found in their inspections was that it's not just coconut rhinoceros speedo, which is affecting the royal palms. Uh, they believe it's three issues that the palms deal with, dealing with, especially the ones, uh, that have, um, severe, I guess, wear and tear at the top on the fronds. So one is CRB. The second is a fungal infection, so they'll be looking at that, too, for treatment. Um, and there a a third one is they're thinking is that there is a rat infestation that's going up the trees, uh, because when they looked at the wear and tear that's going up at the top, it's not, uh, consistent with CRB infestations. Uh, it looks like there's a lot of uh, cutting and pulling at the fronds, which is very similar to what other rats do on other palms. So they believe the trees are dealing with three problems, and they're trying to look, they're, they're trying to deal with all three, working with the city. So the cities, urban forestry division with Parks and Recs, though, they're the ones that actually manage the the royal palms on Royal Palm Drive. But what DOA will be doing next week is the initial treatment for CRB. Um, and then they will be, they'll be working with the city to make sure there's ongoing treatment for the trees. But because there is no way to fully treat CRB, um, the city will have to just do ongoing treatment for the foreseeable, foreseeable future. Um, second, I wanted to bring up, uh, the, uh, sidewalk improvement project that was started on Whitmore Avenue. So you guys probably have noticed that there is the new sidewalk that goes from the park all the way to Ehi Ehi Ave. But then it stops, and then it doesn't go all the way out to the community park. Um, but what's gonna happen in the next, uh, year or two is they're gonna be doing the construction for the remaining, uh, sidewalk. So it'll take it from Ehi Ehi Ave and then go all the way up to the gym. So it'll fully install sidewalks on Whitmore Ave, which is the only state road in that area. So at least for Whitmore Avenue, it'll be fully paved with the ADA compliant sidewalk. Um, other than that, I wanted to also bring up, I know there were some questions on the pedestrian bridge. I have not gotten all the information that I need back from DOT yet. Um, so I'll at least try to email that to the chair and the members. Um, and then at the January meeting, we'll have more information.
Thank you, David. Thank you for the update on the CRB. Everyone's, you know, really concerned about that. It's a thank you very much. And thank you to Senator for quick action on that. So at least we are monitoring it. Um, board members, any question for Senator? Yes, go, Joe.
Uh, David, uh, appreciate all your help you you've done with the Center for Excellence in the library. I've received a lot of complaints from the library, people about where they're gonna be going during construction. And they're not hearing anything from the state librarian. I wonder if if I can set up a meeting with you or the senator and the librarians, um, would you be amenable to that? Let me just let you know, yes or no?
Yeah, yeah, of course. We can just do it out in the district so that, uh, we can meet out the library or somewhere that's near Waheou.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Any other, oh, TJ?
Hey, David, how's it? Thank you for your report. Any update on the Avocado Street property? I'm not sure if you were on earlier, but there still continues to be an issue with that property.
Yeah, I know that, I believe, um, council member Wires rep Kelly, uh, was making, uh, a report on that. But from our side, what we're trying to do is really make the acquisition side of it. Uh, but the enforcement side, we don't have enforcement powers to enforce property owners. Um, but then, at least from what we're trying to do is get that property out of private ownership and get it into state ownership. Um, I think I reported back in June that we appropriated funds, the legislature appropriated funds to acquire the the property. But then the property has to go to, uh, the acquisition still has to go through the regular process of where the governor releases the funds, then DLNR can proceed with the acquisition. So that's what we're focusing on, on our side.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from board members? Uh, Dean, any questions for Senator's office?
Quick comment, David. I just wanted to say thank you to you and the staff, as well as the Senator, for that beautiful story, Kalapapa. My grandfather was one of the last born infants there in Kalapapa back in the turn of the nineteen hundred century. So it was, uh, very touching. And, uh, the family, the association of Kalapapa, Ohana truly supports you, and thanks you very much, and the Senator.
Mahalo, Dean. Yeah, I know, um, the, so the Ways and Means Committee actually did a visit out to Kalapapa, and, um, I know the men, the members, as well as Senator, you know, they were all really, uh, touched to meet the kupuna over there who are remaining. Um, but then it was a really, from what I heard at least, it was a really great experience for them.
That's very good. Thank you, Dean, for sharing, and and thank you, um, David. Please, yeah, I think we all echo that. So, very good. Um, moving on to any other questions? We got board members. Okay, then we're, uh, Representative Peruso?
Aloha, Chair. I'm Yvonne Yoro. I'm filling in for Representative Peruso. Um, I'll make this quick, because I know we want to get through the board business and some items on there. Um, but first off, Representative sends her regards. She wishes she could be here, but she's on the East Coast visiting family right now. Um, so I just have a few updates from our office. So she's working on the hazard awareness and resilience teams, um, in part with the HARP, um, neighborhood networks that she mentioned last meeting. Um, so she's gonna be canvassing for um, the rest of this month as well as December, um, looking to share more about the leaders and the different leaders within the communities. So if she comes by your door, uh, just know that she's sharing about those neighborhood networks. The wildfire, uh, working groups or the working groups that she's a part, part of wildfire remediation and environmental remediation um, had just held their public hearings. Um, so if you are interested in learning about some of the resolutions or some of the, um, conversations that they had in those public hearings, those are posted online, and I can share the links in this chat as well. But, uh, community ma- community members can still participate and still be a part of the conversation. Um, so if you haven't had a chance to join any of those meetings, um, I highly encourage you to join on the next one. Um, so the last one is tomorrow, um, and that can, that is also posted online, so the Capitol website, um, and I can also post the link here. Um, the Keke Caucus High School Internship Application, the deadline's closing next week, Friday, so December first. So if you have any high school or you know a high schooler who's interested in participating, um, in this Keke Caucus, uh, high school internship, um, working with a senate office or a representative's office, um, for the upcoming session, um, please have them send their application to us and our office, or give us a call at any time. I believe our staff member Diego um, Karanza is also in the room, um, in person. So if you have any questions about that, he was, um, he was an intern, um, I think a few years ago. So you can also ask him some questions. Um, and then lastly, I wanted to touch on and highlight something that TJ shared earlier about the community meeting that Representative has hosting next week, Wednesday. So that's gonna be at the Whitmore Gym. Um, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, from five to seven. And what we intend to do at that meeting is to share some legislative updates um, and some of the work that Representative has done during the interim, and then what she envisions this session to look like, um, and how community members can participate for the upcoming session. Um, and yeah, open to questions.
Any quick questions for Representative's office? Dean, any quick question for Representative's office?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the report and happy, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you to Representative as well.
Chair. Chair, sorry, this is David.
Go ahead, David.
Oh.
David? Oh.
Oh.
Sorry, I apologize. No, I just, I forgot to mention this earlier when I was, it was my part, but, uh, starting January, actually, you will be getting a new rep. Um, neither my or my, uh, myself or Malcolm will be coming to the neighborhood boards, um, in the future, because, um, Malcolm will be taking a position with the Ways and Means Committee staff, um, as well as myself. I would actually be moving on. Um, and I'll be taking a position as the bills chief for the Ways and Means Committee. So I'm gonna remain in Senator's office. It's just, I'm not gonna be part of his personal staff office. So I I just want to let you guys, give you guys a heads up.
Oh, thank you. Congratulations on your new positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll get to see you somehow or along the way, right?
Um, you'll still be seeing me along Waheou, just not at neighborhood board meetings. You'll still be seeing me along Wahehua, just not at neighborhood board meetings.
All right, well, good luck, they're very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, so. Yes? Yes?
Cherry Takawa, she just mentioned November twenty-nine Tuesday, isn't that a Wednesday?
I apologize, it is a Wednesday, you're correct. It's gonna be on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
This is Leanne Baker.
Leanne, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we're good, we're gonna move on to board business, item eight on the agenda, and we barely have like five minutes. So really quick, board members, looking for your approval on this item, we're only gonna do three things really quickly. One is approval of our board minutes for this year that we were not able to get to previously. As Chair, I'm saying the minutes of the previous meeting, meetings have been distributed previously to all board members. Are there any corrections to the minutes? And I can tell you, I did look at each one of the minutes of the months that we have not approved, and they are good, and in fact, I have to admit, a little better, because they are referencing the, the markings from the videotape, so it's actually very easy to find sections of the, in the minutes. So again, any corrections on the minutes for February, March, May, June, July, September, and October? Do you have a motion?
Move.
Okay, so Joe and Dean and Sylvia. Okay, if no corrections, then the minutes of February, March, May, June, July, September, and October have been accepted. Okay, moving on, the other thing I just have to mention to everybody's knowledge is the, is the, I'm sorry, I'm looking for it. Where did it go? Is the, oh, I'm sorry, there's a, there's gonna be an action, a meeting for the Keona Reentry Center Conditional Use Permit Major. That meeting, that discussion for the cup will be here at this Holico Room on December thirteenth at eleven-thirty AM. We just got that notice today. So again, for anyone who's interested on that proposed Keona Reentry Center, the Conditional Use Permit Major application will be discussed on December thirteenth here at the Holico Room, right here at eleven-thirty. The item number three that we can hopefully get to is the Shutdown Red Hill Coalition SCRHC requesting NB-26 support of their resolution, or of the resolution to close the Red Hill Bulk Field Storage Facility, and of course, with updated situations. This has been on our agenda for months, and we have a couple of minutes for, open for discussion, or a motion to accept and then proceed with submitting a letter of support. Do I have a motion? Thank you TJ, do you have a second? Thank you Sylvia, any opposed? We're gonna do a roll count real quick. Is there a discussion, or? We have honestly. You need. Into the mic.
I wanted to know if, from what I've seen, that was given to us through emails, the resolution has changed, correct? No, not at all. So we, we, we still need to, we're gonna address litigation that may occur from that? I thought that was taken out.
Anything from you folks, but we're definitely willing to work on revising the narrative.
Yeah, that, that's what I really wanted, but unfortunately, because we never could talk about this, we have the sunshine law, so we couldn't, I can't talk to anybody on the side on it. So I would rather see it go to a committee, and then maybe if we hold a special, not really a special makeup meeting next month or something. Because I do have some concerns on it.
Yeah, we do have a motion on the floor, but. Well, the only other thing is you can send me another, I mean, another copy, and we can, and I can redistribute it to the board again, but then we're not gonna take action tonight if that's.
Okay, 'cause I think we've sent the resolution a number of times to.
But if, if I'm not mistaken, it has changed.
No, not since we've sent it to you.
And that's why I'm saying maybe, well, if you send it, then we can't.
Because the last one that I saw from your group didn't look like the first one. It, it wasn't exactly the same.
I don't, I don't, we've only sent the same resolution, at least the last several months that we've been trying to get this heard.
Yeah, I've seen the, I've seen this, it's the same resolution. I, I haven't seen anything different, June.
I, I thought I saw something about.
You know, that might have been from another group, but anyway, I haven't seen, I haven't seen anything different. Oh, it was sent out months ago.
Yeah, can I just ask a question? Is there anything in there on litigation, like he's, what he's saying?
On litigation, no.
Yeah, because I don't recall reading it either. There's no litigation in that resolution.
There's no litigation.
Well, support for the, the people that are, that don't have any redress, I, I noticed something about that.
I don't believe so. I mean, I could pull it out and read the whole thing to you right now, if you'd prefer.
We're supposed to be out of this room at ten o'clock, so we really.
I don't know what the next step would be for you folks. But it hasn't changed since we've sent it months ago.
Well, and then you got some board members that haven't seen it at all. Which was what? What, that was more than six, yeah, March.
I think I sent an email to everyone on the board September.
So I think. In, in all fairness, my, to our, my board members, I know that you're uncomfortable with June, and that's fair, we're not gonna, so if anything, we're gonna have to carry this over, and if you can re-mail it to me, and I'll distribute it again to everyone, we'll keep this on the agenda for January.
I, I think because there's a motion on the floor, we need to act on the motion first.
Yeah, no, I'm just having that discussion, we're having discussions, so we can, we can withdraw, someone can, we can withdraw that motion. But I'm just saying as discussion, because I know you're uncomfortable, you not having that information, I wouldn't.
Yeah, especially, especially if not all members have seen it.
So, so somebody needs to make a motion to rescind, yeah.
I made the motion, and I'm not willing to rescind the motion.
Okay. But TJ, yeah, to both.
And the only reason why I say that, because like, you know, we can't even email one another back and forth because of the sunshine law, and the only way. No, but we cannot even discuss it until this.
It's at an open meeting, I understand, so we're not gonna, we're, we're never of the, of the nature to force anyone, so the thing is, but we do have a motion on the, on the floor between, it was, the motion was made by TJ, seconded by Sylvia, so the question is whether someone will rescind it.
And I, I just was recommending that it goes to a committee, then we can discuss it, right? And at a committee. Okay. No, I'm, I know, I don't want to see it passed yet. Yeah.
Then vote accordingly.
Can I ask another question then? Or, go ahead, go ahead.
We, I'm at nine fifty-seven right now, we gotta take this motion already.
Okay. Consider the motion then.
Yeah, so the motion on the table right now is to adopt the Shutdown Red Hill Coalition Resolution, was made by a member Quorozma, and seconded by Sylvia. Quorozma? Francher? Harvest? Manley Coach? Mendelson?
Favor, yes.
Miller? Umaki? Yamamoto? Ijikawa? The motion is adopted with five votes, two noes, and no abstentions.
Thank you, thank you so much, we really appreciate all of your support, thank you, thank you very much.
And it is, everyone, it is nine fifty-eight, and this meeting is adjourned. Mahalo, everyone.